Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, December 16th, 2024. Thank you and welcome to everyone who's joining us here in the council chambers. Thanks to everyone who is watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any coverings, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome and thanks to everybody for being with us tonight. First order of business tonight is the approval of our agenda. And council, we have another full agenda tonight. Under our introductory items, item two, item 2.1, we have the introduction of new employees. We're going to meet a couple of new employees. We will hear a presentation of the Port Authority's draft five-year economic development plan, which I have heard also already, and you're going to be excited to hear it. It's good stuff. And we are going to make, speaking of Port Authority, item 2.3, we're going to make an appointment to the Port Authority Commissioner, Commission. Our consent business, Councilmember De La Sandro has the consent agenda tonight, and we have 23 items on the consent agenda. Item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. We have four public hearings tonight. We have item 4.1 is a public hearing regarding city code amendments regarding our park dedication and plating standards ordinance. Item 4.2 is our truth and taxation hearing for 2024. It's on our 2025 property tax levy and general fund budget. Item 4.3, a public hearing on the 2025 through 2034 capital improvement plan. And item 4.4 is a public hearing regarding our energy benchmarking ordinance. Finally, our, item five, our organizational business this evening will have a discussion under item 5.1 on our 2025 legislative platform. Item 5.2, a study item, we'll be discussing our missing middle housing issue in the city of Bloomington. And item 5.3, we'll hear an introduction of the American Boulevard Transit Study that will be kicking off here shortly. We'll wrap up, as we always do, with item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. Council, any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I will move approval of the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Loman to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, and we have an agenda. Our first item tonight is the introduction of new employees, and I think it's in our community development department. Our director, Kim Burden, is going to make the introductions, I think. Or not. Well, we have two folks now here, Nikki and James. Why don't you come on up unless somebody else wants to pinch hit for Kim?
Could we both come?
Please, please, why not? Why not? Amy will pinch hit very quickly for you, just to give the introduction and the hello, and then we'll hear from you each. Thank you for stepping in.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I am pleased to introduce my brother, Jim Markson. Jim started in the community development BNI a couple of weeks ago as an electrical inspector. And we also have Nikki, and I'm sorry, I don't know Nikki's last name, Treptow, Nikki Treptow. And because I am pinching, I don't have their bios, so maybe they want to introduce a little bit about themselves and let you know where they came from and anything else they want to say.
That would be great. Jim, why don't you start us, please?
Yeah, my name's Jim Markson. I live in Webster, Minnesota. I've been an electrician since 1993, and I am new electrical inspector for the city of Bloomington. Really excited to be here, very thankful that I have this opportunity, and I'm just glad to help the people of Bloomington.
Where do you come to us from, Jim?
Pardon me?
Where do you come to us from? Where were you previously?
I was in the private sector, working for an electrical contractor.
Okay, wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. And Nikki, welcome to you as well.
Thank you so much. I'm Nikki Treptow. I'm in the building and inspections area, office supervisor, and coming from healthcare, specifically dental. I've worked in the dental field for 18 years, long time, and I was in Bloomington for seven years right before coming here. So it's a familiar area, and I live in St. Paul, and I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, a little all over the place.
Great background, yes.
Yeah.
Well, welcome.
Thank you so much.
Glad you're both here. And you both have very public-facing jobs. I mean, you're going to be out there, and people are going to be seeing you and appreciate your representation of the city of Bloomington, because for a lot of people, you are the city of Bloomington. When they talk to you, they're talking to the city of Bloomington. So it's a big responsibility, and expectations are high for our city employees, and we know there will be nothing but the best from both of you. So we appreciate your being with us tonight and taking the time to say hello, and look forward to seeing you again in the future. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment? I don't think the people of Bloomington understand how lucky we are to have our own electrical inspectors and building inspectors here, because as a licensed contractor, we've recently received notice that in many communities that don't have their own electrical inspectors, that the timeframe for the state to do those inspections has been pushed out, not just a day or two, but a week or two. And so thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. I know the people that are doing projects within Bloomington appreciate it, and our entire inspections team does an amazing job. It really is. As someone who works in the field, I appreciate everything you guys do, and I know many other contractors do as well. So thank you.
Well said, council member. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Now are we good to give a round of applause? Now we can.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Item 2.2 on our agenda is a presentation of the draft five-year economic development plan for our Port Authority. Holly Masick, our Port Authority Administrator, is here. And as I said, this is exciting, because this is a big step forward for our Port Authority here in the city of Bloomington. And council, I'm looking forward to you hearing this and everyone in who's watching and observing this, because this is a big plan, and it's an exciting plan, and I'm excited to get going on it. So Ms. Masick, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Again, I'm Holly Masick, the Port Authority Administrator for the city of Bloomington. And for those listening at home, that is the Economic Development Agency here for the city of Bloomington. And yes, it is a big plan, and it is a big milestone, but in the interest of brevity tonight, you're going to hear five minutes about it. So if anyone would like to talk further about it afterwards, I'm very happy to sit down and talk with you, and we can go over the plan in more detail. Before I introduce our consultants here from TIP Strategies, I just want to provide you all with a bit of context. You've all heard this story before, but the Port Authority expanded recently in the last two years. We moved from working just in the South Loop area, mostly on development and redevelopment, to actually working citywide and really growing out our services to include a lot more business assistance, and more intentionally incorporating our placemaking colleagues into our work as well. And so with that very big change, the port imposed a levy to help support it, and it was decided that we should do an economic development plan to help guide our work in the future. And as part of that plan, we started in 2023 with a facilitated session with our internal staff to really talk about what we wanted in our RFP process, went through our selection, and then selected eventually TIP Strategies, who's here tonight to work on the plan, and we have been working on it together throughout 2024. So what you're seeing tonight is a result of that work, stakeholder engagement, research, discussion, review of the draft, and then our hope is to bring that final draft to the Port Authority in January. And so with that, I will introduce Jeff Marcel, Senior Partner at TIP Strategies, and Elizabeth Scott, Senior Consultant at TIP Strategies, and then I'll return to the podium for questions when they're done.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, it's good to see all of you again. I'm Jeff Marcel. I'm a senior partner with TIP Strategies, and I'm joined by Elizabeth Scott, Senior Consultant with our team. It's a pleasure to be with you. Let me share with you just quickly what we want to cover this evening. We'll give you a quick overview of the planning process, and then we'll do a very high-level overview of the strategic plan. It's the draft strategic plan itself, tell you a little bit about next steps, and as Holly mentioned, we'll be around for Q and A. And that means after this meeting, we're more than happy to spend time with you as well if you have additional questions. Just by way of background, just a quick introduction to us, we're a nationally-recognized economic development and workforce development strategic planning firm. We work with communities all around the country, helping them think through plans to develop and maintain healthy, vibrant economies. I also want to start off by recognizing and thanking the steering committee members that have served with us for many, many months. You see their names listed here. You're probably very familiar with these folks. They have been outstanding to work with, cannot thank them enough for all of the time and attention. When you read that, this plan, this is really their plan, and I want to thank them for all their input. I also want to recognize and thank Holly and the entire team at the Port Authority. They have been brilliant to work with, and we can't say enough about everything that they have contributed. Just to go quickly through the planning process, this has been our planning schedule, and you could see a whole host of different tasks during the life of the project during the planning process. I won't go into each one of these, but I will tell you, it's been a very comprehensive planning process, and it's been grounded on data analysis, but also stakeholder input. Oftentimes, we get asked the question, where do the strategies and actions that we identify, where do they come from? And really, for us, they come from three different places. First, what the community, what leaders in the community, what you all share with us? What are your ideas? What are the things that you want to see accomplished here in the city? But we also pay a lot of attention to the data, and we spend an enormous amount of time looking at national best practices and what our experience doing this kind of work all over the U.S. for over 30 years brings to the table. And speaking of stakeholder engagement, I did just want to highlight the work that was done. There's been a lot of stakeholder engagement as a part of this process. Elizabeth and I have been in Bloomington many times on multiple trips. We have been well-served, as I mentioned, by our steering committee. And then we've also spent a large number of, a lot of time doing one-on-one interviews as well as focus groups, and engaged with over 130 participants throughout this process. There were some key themes, though, that came throughout that stakeholder input process. I won't go through all of these, but there, I will highlight just a few. Certainly equitable growth was a priority theme that came across during all of our stakeholder engagement. And what we mean by that is that really this plan should serve the entire community. It should serve all of the residents of the city of Bloomington. Additionally, related to business retention, expansion, and recruitment, we think about small businesses and the priority that they play in this economy, and that was a priority, especially with a focus on women and minority-owned businesses. And so I think you'll see that reflected in the plan. And the last one I'll mention was focusing on the supply chain, and what we mean there is the concentration of the semiconductor industry that exists here in Bloomington, and trying to maximize that for the economic health of the community. And so those are just a few of the key themes that surfaced from our stakeholder engagement. I'm going to turn it to Elizabeth now to take you through an overview of the plan itself.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening. As Jeff mentioned, this really, the plan is really the culmination of almost a year-long planning process. The plan itself is guided by an economic vision statement. This really serves as the North Star and helps align all of the strategies and actions in that plan. In addition to the vision statement, there are the Strategy Committee, as well as the team at the Port Authority, identified four guiding principles that are woven throughout all of the strategies and actions in the plan, and those are inclusive and equitable growth, also one of the number-one themes that we heard loud and clear during our stakeholder engagement. Sustainability, this includes both resilience, economic diversification, as well as maintaining and preserving the land that is here in Bloomington. Collaboration and service, as well as accountability. In addition to the action plan, the deliverables also include a staffing plan that helps align staff roles and responsibilities to the actual action plan. And the action plan has eight different objectives. Traded sector, this focuses on businesses that serve goods and services outside of Bloomington, small businesses. That includes both local sector and traded sector. Innovation, this includes everything from existing businesses, but also startups and entrepreneurs. Real estates and infrastructure. Thriving Places incorporates the creative placemaking work that is already occurring, but also commercial nodes and investing in areas throughout, and really incorporating and making this plan serve the entire city. Talent attraction and retention. Wraparound services, this includes everything from mobility to childcare to housing, all of the things that a workforce and businesses need to support their employees to be able to grow and thrive here. And the last area is marketing events. This also includes communications, and it's really grounded in storytelling around what the Port Authority and what Bloomington is doing. And with that, next step, so where do we go from here? While Jeff and I are in town, we'll, tomorrow, we'll be leading an implementation workshop with the Port Authority team, helping to align priorities and developing work plans, what that looks like, where additional refinements need to be made throughout the action plan. Over the course of the next month, we'll be finalizing that draft economic development strategic plan, and we expect that the final deliverables will be here by the end of January in 2025.
And as we said, we're happy to respond to any questions that you might have right now, and if they're questions that you have later on, we're more than willing to spend a little bit of time with you. So, Mr. Mayor?
Appreciate it. Thank you much, and thanks for the presentation. The one question that jumped to my mind, last week, we had a great presentation, both at the port and I think here at the council within the last couple of weeks, on the small business survey. And I would look to you and also to Holly, the business, the overall business survey, how do the two plans, how do the results of the survey fit together with the Port Authority's plans?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor and council members, so that survey was done initially, I believe, in 2020, and was just recently done again, and we saw from that survey an improvement in how we are interacting with businesses. And I would say the baseline was already pretty positive, but it's definitely strengthening. And so I think that really reinforces the work that we are doing with the small business community, as well as the large business community. Really growing those relationships has come to the forefront as important, doing very intentional outreach, and that work is included in this plan as well, that we will continue to offer those services and also become more systematic about some of the work that we're doing to make sure that we can really track. We will be implementing a customer relationship management software very soon, so the port will be able to track those interactions, will be able to keep more focused lists of groups that we work with, and we'll also be able to share that with other members of the community development department that speak to businesses.
Fabulous. And I saw one of the goals, of course, being alignment, which means a lot of things in a lot of different ways, but I would think the Port Authority plan in alignment with the results of the small business, or that business survey, I think makes perfect sense, and I'm sure you all can appreciate and understand, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Council, additional questions here? Councilmember De La Sandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, I'm curious about how you're thinking about the actionability of the recommendations that come from the, you know, from what your presentation, as we think about what we're going to see. For example, you know, there are, there are always some things that we could do in the first year, and the, some things that will take three to five years. You know, I'm just kind of curious how, if you know at this point, how things are laying out, like how many truly, you know, actionable things we're going to get in the first couple of years versus what, what you're thinking about more strategically, if you can kind of lay that out in terms of percentages or back of the napkin. I realize it's not final yet. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember De La Sandro, and council members, that's an excellent question that actually leads very well into what we will be doing tomorrow. So you saw eight overarching objectives of the plan, and each one of them has a number of subbullets, I would say. I mean, it's bullets and then subbullets, so probably three to four each. And so we'll be breaking that down tomorrow to talk about just that. This is meant to be a plan that serves us for five years and also points us a little bit beyond five years. So we'll be breaking it down into what are we going to do in three months, six months, first year, first three years, et cetera. Do you have specifics on how many objective, or how many points there were? I can't recall.
I don't have that quantity, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I can tell you, council member, one of the things that we, the approach that we take when we think about strategic planning, to your point, it's a, it's a large document, there's a lot of content in the document, but what we try to, what we end up doing is providing what we call an implementation matrix. It's basically a spreadsheet. It includes every recommendation, every action that's incorporated, along with a category under prioritization, what should be done the first year, what should be done second, third, fourth, fifth. We'll work with the team at the port to identify priority years and timeframes for some of the tasks to get accomplished. We'll also be identifying metrics and milestones associated with all of those tasks, so you can measure what's going on over the life of the plan. And as Holly referenced and you referenced, this is a five-year plan, so everything in the document doesn't have to get accomplished on, on the first year. Always try to make sure folks appreciate that. It is a large plan, there's a lot of content, but it's an ambitious plan, and the team at the port is, is exceptional, and we have all the confidence in the world over the next five years that all of those tasks will be undertaken.
Any additional questions, council? If not, thank you. Thanks for being with us tonight, and looking forward to continuing to see this move. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Council item 2.3 is somewhat related. We have an appointment to be made to the Port Authority Commission. And as a reminder, this is just a touch different than our other boards and commissions, that the, the Port Authority Commissioner appointments are mayoral appointments. And so I'll make the recommendation and look for the, the consent of the council as we move forward on this, but this is officially a mayoral appointment. And we had one opening on our Port Authority, and Holly, I think, described very well what our Port Authority is. It's our economic development arm of the city. We had one opening, and we had four applicants, and I will say, very good applicants. We had good conversations with a number of applicants, and we're excited to, to talk to them and with the possibilities that each of them might have brought to the, to the position. One of those candidates was a longtime member of the Port Authority, Cynthia Hunt, and Cynthia has extensive background and experience in the banking industry. She's got her banking, or a background within the Port Authority, I think dating back at least a couple decades. She was on the Planning Commission. She's got extensive experience throughout the community. And while other candidates, as I said, were, were very good and excited the group in a number of ways, the, the interview panel, which consisted of myself and Holly Masick, the Port Authority Administrator, and Bob Erickson, who's the president of the Port Authority, we came to the consensus and the conclusion that to reappoint Cynthia Hunt to a six-year term on the Port Authority was the path forward that we should take. And so, council, that is what I would recommend to you, and would look for, would look for nodding approval, and would ask if you have any questions or comments to be made on that. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to chime in. So obviously, I think all of you know that I served on the port my first term on city council, and so got to work with Cynthia during my time on the body, and I would just say that she was wonderful to work with. She was never afraid to speak her mind and disagree, and I think has, you know, obviously provided very valuable insights, and so I have great respect for her, and I, I support your, your suggestion. I do have one other comment, though.
Please.
So since these are six-year terms, there isn't a lot of turnover on the port, and I think we're very lucky that we have members of the Port Authority who want to continue to serve term after term, and I think it's really important to provide that historical perspective. But I also think it's important to bring in some new fresh ideas and fresh perspectives, and so I'm not suggesting that we support somebody else tonight, but I do think that we should have a really intentional strategy of thinking about how we do that and what that looks like over the long term. And then I did see a note here that states, due to limited seat staff, will consider establishing committees to help advance the five-year economic development plan, and I think that that's a great idea.
Yes, and I, thank you, council member, and agree completely with your comments and your statements there. But yes, the conversation is ongoing. We have had that conversation within the Port Authority and within the Port Administration to try and find ways to, to continue the continuity, because that, that institutional memory is an important part of the work that the Port Authority does, but at the same time, to, to look for ways to try and bring in fresh ideas and perhaps new faces wherever possible. So, Councilmember De La Sandro, I saw your hand up earlier, and then Councilmember Rivas.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's pretty adjacent to the conversation that, that Councilmember Carter was asking. Obviously, not, not a discussion explicitly about Ms. Hunt so much as, as we talk about, because it's a six-year term, we talk about the, the goal of diversity and things of that nature on the council, and yet we haven't changed that, that specific authority in many, many years. So I'm actually kind of surprised that this year, given the fact that we had a couple of pretty strong candidates, that we wouldn't make that move. All that having been said, I know it's not my, my job to make any contrary recommendation or anything like that, but I, I just want people to, I would like us to see us move in that direction as soon as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivas.
I just would like to reiterate the same idea of both Councilmembers Carter and, and De La Sandro. As I was reading the packet, I made a lot of notes on regards to this. The, the goal is to, to provide the entire city with a voice, it says in there, based on what the city states. And so far, what I see is the same people for so many years, to the extent that the other night I heard that somebody had been there for 40 years, right? So to me, it perpetuates the same ideas, the same goals, and it's not that the goals are wrong, it's just that the reality is that we should have different people in there, not just for change, but for the mere reason that everybody has different points of view. I know all of them are being expressed right now in many ways, from what I have learned in the, about a year of being here, is that everything goes one way, because not the lack, not because of the lack of ideas, but because everybody is centered in accomplishing the same goal without any discussion from outsiders. It feels more like it's, is the good old boys, for lack of better words, just having with the same continuation of ideas and plans without any challenging. To me, it's, you know, again, I have no say in who is appointed to this position, but at the same time, the city is contradicting what its goals are by appointing the same people over and over and from one commission to the other. We don't see any change in people and no new ideas coming in. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. And I will say, the other boards and commissions actually have the benefit of term limits, and so those do turnover on a regular basis. For some reason, as the Port Authority was set up, there was no, there were not term limits put in place when, when the Port Authority was set up decades ago, and I have no idea why. So it's part of the conversation, and it's part of, one of the things we're talking about is possible ways that we could, tools that we could use to try and turn the, turn the composition of the Port Authority over. Councilmember Loman?
You know, Mayor, I wasn't going to say anything. Councilmember Carter had mentioned this, the limitation to the, to the board itself in terms of how many people you could appoint on there. I know you replaced a long-term member of that port and brought new, fresh ideas to the idea, and then Councilmember Carter stepped aside, and so that, and I know that you are committed to that, that idea, and you know, we've talked about that idea of bringing new folks there. But I think it's also important to remember, and you've mentioned it too, the institutional knowledge. You know, we've got a lot of turnover that we've seen in our, our staff overall, too, and I think this is an important point to be able to do that, so you understand that, you know, have, have folks to kind of know where things have been and that type of thing. So, you know, I, you know, I trust your leadership in terms of when it makes sense to kind of make that move, so that we don't put our development future at risk. So I will be supporting, you know, what you've put forward here today.
Thank you, council member. I do appreciate that. So, council, as I said, this is a mayoral appointment. I, I intend to appoint Cynthia Hunt. I appreciate the feedback and appreciate the, the discussion here. Can't say I disagree with any of it, but tonight, I think Cynthia is the best person to, to serve on the Port Authority moving forward, and I hope that we get your blessing and ultimate support of Cynthia as she spends her next term on the Port Authority. So, all right? Thank you. So I will move the appointment of Cynthia Hunt to the Port Authority for, let me see if I get this correctly. I will move, I will move with the council approval to appoint I will move, I will move with the council approval to appoint Cynthia Hunt to the following term, January 1st, 2025 to December 31st, Jan. 2031, to the port authority. Motion in a second to appoint Cynthia Hunt to the port authority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with councilmember Rivas in opposition. We will move on to item three, our consent agenda. Councilmember Alessandro has a consent business tonight. Councilmember Alessandro.
I do, yes, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of holds. We're going to hold 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, as we always do for donations. Councilmember Rivas and councilmember Nelson and myself, I think, all have questions on 3.1 and 3.2. I'm going to hold 3.1, 3.8, and then 3.15. So if any other holds?
I'm sorry, what was the final hold?
Yep, so 3.15.
1.5, I thought you said 25 and I.
That would be a stretch. I could make one up.
Nope, we've got plenty on there.
I think we have plenty. Or do I have any other holds from any other council members? Okay. If that's the case, then I appreciate that. Then I am going to move items 3.4 to 3.7, items 3.9 to 3.14, pi, 3.16 to 3.22 of tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Alessandro, second by councilmember Carter to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So we'll go through the holds now. We'll start with item 3.1, resolution approving the 2025 Recreation Facility Enterprise Fund budgets.
I, I think part of my question was answered. I was just looking for a very quick clarification. The, the, when we got, when we put questions out there today, the question I received or the information we received back was that the Dwan, the Enterprise Fund budget for Dwan Golf Course was, there was $300,000 in there for a, a specific study, but it sounded like it was going to come out of, of, of capital dollars. So I guess my question would be if we, if, if we're not spending that, are we actually spending those capital dollars? And if so, where are we spending those capital dollars?
Mr. Verbrugge?
I'm going to, I'm looking to Park and Rec Director, nope, we're going to get, we're going to get Kari Carlson, our deputy finance officer. Can you, can you restate the question one more time?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. If I rem, if I have it correct, there was a specific item in, in the Dwan Golf Course Enterprise Budget for Design Review, I think it was, it was about a $300,000.
Related to the renovation?
I assume it was related to the renovation. We said not to do that this year, and the response was, that's, that's cool, it's in there, but we're not going to do it. So there's, but there's no impact one way or the other to the levy. And I, my question is, well then, does that mean we're spending it somewhere else, is what I'm asking? Yeah.
So mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Alessandro, so if, since that will not go forward, but it wasn't the original budget that got, was brought forward, that money will not be spent and so it will remain in the working capital fund balance of that fund. So it will basically in the cash of that fund. So it'll just stay there because the Dwan Golf Course is in its own separate fund. So any money that's not spent during 2025 will just fall down to the cash balance of that fund and be available for future use.
And it's, and it's, it's not available to offset any other funding that might come from, for example, the levy towards Dwan Golf Course, is it?
Yes, mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Alessandro, the 2025 budget for the golf course does not have any property tax subsidy.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Additional council questions on item 3.1? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thanks. I don't know that I have to make questions here, but, and we've talked about all these things, so I'll be super quick. Aquatics, I understand that the levy, the property tax amount went down, but it's going to go back up in future years. I'm concerned about any capital expenditures in this year until we know exactly what the aquatics and the Health and Wellness Center looks like, given that we're going back to a 500,000 or so support for a facility that's open about 12 weeks a year versus a facility that'll be open 50-some weeks a year. Had the same question with regards to that. I would ask just a simple question about the Dwan, 330,000, if it's possible for us to just remove that so we know for sure that it's not going to get spent. And then, as I've raised before, I have concerns about the Center of the Arts, the $500,000 increase, including some of the staffing and that nature, particularly when I believe that in 2025, we're going to be doing a, a full review of the Center for the Arts. And I would, as I have said before, prefer to just push that into that study and take a look at it. Totally respect that we have an individual that's working significantly and, and doing a great job. But, you know, adding two positions in this budget is a little uncomfortable for me. So those are, those are my three items on that.
Thank you, council member. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, regarding the Dwan, there really isn't anything to take out of the budget just because the project is delayed, so that funding or that, that expenditure won't be made until you start moving that project forward. So it just, it's just the working capital balance for the golf fund will just stay as it is until the, the number is expended. And, you know, if the question is, what assurance do we have that it's not going to be spent? An amount of that much has to come through council for approval. So that's one check on that. The Aquatics Center, you certainly can, as a council, indicate to staff that you would like to discuss any capital expenditures before those are approved. Again, if they are under the threshold of dollars that normally would come before council. So if council wishes to discuss whether it's appropriate to make investments in 2025, I think the time to do that would be now to declare to staff that if we are going to spend some capital dollars at the facility in 2025, that you want to be informed and have an opportunity to review it. And then appreciate the comments on the BCA. I think we largely answered that unless I missed a specific question. I apologize.
That was more of a comment than.
That's what I thought.
Than a question. So I, I understand what is in the budget there and I appreciate the other things. And then I will just formally on the record make that request that any capital expenditures for the aquatics come before the council regardless of size or if they meet that threshold. Just given the ongoing conversations about aquatics at the other facility as well. Make sure we're aligned on those.
Short of a formal motion, council, are we in agreement on that? Or I, I don't think that's an issue. I think to have that conversation if and when any possible capital expenditure would come forward. So noted by staff, I don't think we need to do a formal note, a formal motion on that. So very good. All right, thank you. Look for action on item 3.1? Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Rivas, anything?
The questions I have already were answered.
Very good. Councilmember Alessandro, action on item 3.1?
Yes, sir. I will move to adopt the 2025 Recreation Facility Enterprise Fund budgets.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Alessandro, second by, I missed who it was, councilmember Loman, to accept item 3.1 on a consent business. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with councilmember Nelson in opposition. Item 3.2 on the agenda, councilmember Alessandro.
Yes, so the biggest question that I had related to the fire pension fund was related to how we, how we are, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it, pulling money out of that fund. So, so I assume that it's a fund that is, it is on the market, and so it is a fund that, you know, comes and goes with the, the market in general. Are, are, I don't need specifics about how it's, it's balanced, but my guess is that we're doing some kind of a sell-off in order to accumulate those dollars or, you know, or do we have some dollars that get sold off on a regular interval and then are put in some kind of cash account that we can then access this way? I would just love to have a clear understanding about that.
Mr. Verbrugge? Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Alessandro, the fire pension fund has a couple of sources. We have investments and we get annual yield on that. The yield, the amount of that determines how much that we have to contribute each year above and beyond the fire pension aid that comes into the city as well. That's a long-term fund that we have forecasted out. The, the long-term model assumes certain returns on an annual basis, and we use that fund for a couple of purposes. So we also borrow money for that, for some of the advanced planning work on the fire station projects that we're replacing right now. And then when we sell the debt on those, those bond proceeds go back into the fund, so it's in, in and out. And then the comfort level utilizing that fund to manage some of the transition of the firefighters who are being funded by a safer grant is based on the long-term model and the comfort level with the fund balance over time. So those funds are available because that's a fire purpose, we're able to utilize it in that manner.
So, so said another way, we're just, we're leveraging proceeds from the yield that comes on an, an annual basis on those long-term investments. And we don't need to make any adjustments to the investments themselves or we're obligated to those adjustments anyway, so we can't make any adjustments to those investments.
Correct. And council may recall that a number of years ago, actually I think this preceded a number of you on the councils, we spent, we set up a special fire pension reserve fund because in the past, and this is 14 years ago now, the market performance was so bad that actually had to issue debt to meet the obligation. The reserve fund was established and we had some levy dollars going in there to make sure that we could maintain that fund and not have those types of incidents occur. Is there anything else, Kari?
Mr. Carlson, anything to add?
Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Alessandro, I will just add as well that this special revenue fund that we call the Fire Pension Special Revenue Fund, the specific purpose for it is to pay our annual obligation. And so we fund that with levy, and sometimes we don't need to pay as much as what we levy. And so it has, we have done, since the investments have done well, where we haven't had to put such a large obligation into the fire pension, it has grown. But again, it always depends on where we land at the end of the year with those investments. But the, the source is tax levy. Some, in the beginning, when that fund was established, some strategic priority money came over, but that whole, the whole reason for it, it is actually cash that we have in the city. So since it is a very healthy balance right now, it is a source that we can look to for helping transfer in when the safer grant expires.
Yep, that's great. That increases my comfort level to know that it is essentially tax dollars that we set for a specific purpose that have yielded benefits beyond that purpose, and we can take that and actually start to pay down the, the inequity we'll have around the, once the safer grants aren't here, right? And so I, my expectation would be that that's noted in, you know, as we've, last week, if you remember, we had that long-term plan for the fire department. I'm hoping that we can start to see that, that kind of thing happening so that we know when those obligations are coming due after the safer grants are, are, are done, that, that burden that's going to come onto the taxpayer for those, for those staff, that we are, we'll know how much we've been able to reduce that burden by virtue of doing this transaction, if that makes sense. Thanks. Okay, did anyone else have?
Are there other comments on item 3.2? Councilmember Rivas and councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Rivas.
I just had a, a quick question that was already answered, but I, I just, I was just curious of whether we were paying back any funds that were being taken out of a pension, which the answer was already given, but that's the only question I had in regards to that. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to reiterate, and I brought this up before, that I have concerns about the communications fund. You know, we have an increase of revenue since '23 of 400,000 or 300,000, an increase of expenses by 300,000, 400, sorry. Anyways, we, we're losing, we, we're adding 75% of the property tax support to this fund because of declining revenues in other areas. And my only comment is we need to have this on the agenda for next year to address. I mean, we, we can't continue to go this direction. I've also been clear about my sort of lack of support for franchise fees and just, you know, letting people know what it is and including in the levy. But, you know, we're, we're increasing the property tax support for this significantly this year, and that seems to be ongoing for a number of years. Expenses continue to go up, which makes sense, and that's what's happening in the world. But we, we need to get our arms around this one in the next year, in my opinion. So this, this one is a big concern for me.
Any additional questions on item 3.2? Comments? Councilmember Loman.
I want to thank my colleagues for their support and the idea of what we're doing around the fire pension fund, in general, fire fund, in terms of what we're trying to do there. Certainly am nervous about doing that, but I do think it makes, I think staff has assured us that it makes the most amount of sense to kind of do that and to move forward that way. It does provide some relief for taxpayers as we kind of move forward. And then in terms of the communications fund that my colleague, councilmember Nelson had mentioned, I had shared those, my concerns when we first, at the outset, when we, we moved forward with the communication funds. But I, I think, you know, we're at a point now where I think really the community really relies upon those things. I'm not saying that we, we shouldn't look into those things and, and try to find the best way forward, but I think we need to, you know, as, as we see the, that industry change and shift, that we need to, to be careful that we're, we're not providing less service as it relates to communications and what that all brings to, to that whole conversation for the general public, mayor.
Councilmember Rivas?
My, I have the same concerns that councilmembers Nelson and Loman had. However, I do understand the need for the communications department to grow since we are demanding as, not, not only as councilmembers, but also as residents, who are demanding a lot of information being given to us and transparency as well. I think that was one of the best means of communication that the city now possesses. And, and in my nine, 10 months of being here, what I have experienced is that through the communications department, we had learned a lot of issues that otherwise would have, would have been available to the public. You know, that said, I do believe that we need to watch how much is being invested on it or if we can find ways of, you know, better ways to utilize the tools being given to the department. But what I can say is if there is any department that I, I have seen perform tremendously well is the communications department. So in that regard, in spite of the fact that we need to watch the expenses, I, I truly support that department. I think we do, they're doing an outstanding job in communicating to public and making the public where what the city is planning on doing and is, and is doing currently. So in spite of the expenses, I think they're doing an outstanding job in regards to the openness the city has shown for the last year or so that I've been here. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, mayor. I'll make this quick. So I appreciated that you had asked this question, councilmember Nelson, and what I also appreciated was the staff response that was sent later this afternoon. And what made me feel a little bit better is that although we've seen a decline in the franchise fee revenues, a new 10-year agreement with Comcast will significantly increase the PEG fees. And there's also this bill before the legislature in 2025, the Equal Access to Broadband Act, that would give us more power. And so I, I agree, though, that I think we need to have, once those things kind of come to fruition, more conversation around what does that mean for communications in the city and, and how sustainable is that?
All right. No further council discussion on item 3.2? I'd look for action on it. Councilmember Alessandro.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree. I think it's an important enough thing that we set aside some time for it, so I'm looking forward to that next year. With that, we'll move in a resolution approving the 2025 Special Revenue Fund budgets for communications, parks and recreation, and the fire pension fund.
Motion by councilmember Alessandro, second by councilmember Rivas to accept item 3.2 on a consent business. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Let's skip item 3.3, council member, and jump to item 3.8.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I wanted to just make sure I understood the, the, so it, it looked to me, based on the information that we got in the packet, that information that we got in the packet, that 40% of the residents didn't want this to be done, some of whom are proposing something different. But no, but there was no clear majority. But I, I'm concerned that if that, if it feels like 40% of the, of the population not wanting it was large, as, as large or larger than any of the other particular options, and I'm not suggesting that we only focus on their feedback, but because I don't know what the residents who didn't respond are looking for. But I'm, I want to be sure I have a clear understanding of, of the, and then the public has a clear understanding of why we're proposing to move the project forward anyway, if that makes sense.
Mr. Brugge?
Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Delisandro, Amy Marone is here, and I think she can address the question.
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Marone, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. So you're correct, Councilmember Delisandro. So we did get responses back. What we were doing is, so this is a roadway that carries a higher volume of traffic than we typically would see on a residential roadway. This is a prime candidate for a sidewalk when we see those types of volumes, and a sidewalk on this roadway would fill a sidewalk gap that we have between 84th Street and now Mile Creek Parkway. We've set a lot of objectives in our Active Transportation Action Plan, and this is a perfect candidate for sidewalk based on some of the goals in that plan. We also have our Safe Routes to School Plan for Poplar Bridge Elementary. One of the elements identified in that plan was to construct sidewalk on Stanley Avenue. With those goals, we did go to the neighborhood and we did want to know what is the general feeling about sidewalk on this roadway. It was not presented as a vote. It was presented as a what is your opinion about sidewalk on this roadway? And we were only asking the adjacent property owners. And obviously, those are the people that are immediately affected, but don't necessarily are not the ones that experience all the benefit of sidewalk as well. So these, this is definitely one factor to consider is the results of the, the response from the people that live on that roadway. And as you stated, we didn't hear back from nine of the 27. That can be, that is really up to your interpretation. So oftentimes, if people are adamantly opposed to something, we will hear about it. And so our staff recommendation is to move forward with, considering the idea of adding sidewalk on this roadway. We've come up with an option that if we were to, to be awarded funding for it, since it is outside of how we typically would do this type of a project, if we were to get some outside funding, it would be a way to provide some traffic calming by narrowing the roadway, provide some pedestrian safety by providing off-road pedestrian facilities, and minimizing the impact to the adjacent property owners by narrowing the road so that we can minimize our impacts to the trees as much as possible. Hopefully, that answered your question, but I'm certainly, will answer anything else.
Yeah, I just have one other question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor, based on what I see. So I think the proposal that you have here, has it, has the sidewalk on the, on the west side? Is that correct?
Correct, Councilmember Delisandro. So basically, the concept is to narrow the road and add sidewalk off the road. We are looking at a very preliminary layout as far as a funding application goes. Those types of details could be definitely worked out when we order the project. The concept and the cost estimate is to narrow the road and build off-road sidewalk.
Okay. And, and any, any plan in that area, knowing that the, the sidewalk that's on Nine Mile Creek Parkway, as I think on the east side, so there'll be a crossing there or something? Will that be part of the consideration?
Absolutely, that would be part of the consideration.
Okay, great. That, thank you for that. Appreciate the opportunity to kind of air this in public, just because I've had a lot of calls from that neighborhood about this issue. So I wanted to just make sure we had a chance to have another conversation on it. I have nothing further, and if nobody else has anything they'd like to ask, I'll go ahead and move it.
Please do.
All right, great. I move a resolution of support of a Stanley Avenue sidewalk project between 84th Street, West 84th Street and Nine Mile Creek Parkway, Minnesota, 2024 Safe Routes to School Infrastructure Solicitation.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muo to accept item 3.8 on our consent business tonight. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.15.
Yes, this is just a fun one that I wanted to make sure people had, had attention paid to it. So I know that there are a lot of folks out there who are very, very interested in the work that we do. We've gotten a lot of feedback about Nine Mile Creek, for example, and everything like that. But the good folks in our Natural Resources Office are continuing to make strides in other areas of the city. So I wanted to call attention to the public that we are looking to get an expedited conservation project done in Tarn Hill Park. Tarn Hill Park is a beautiful piece of land. It has not been maintained, and this will go a long way towards making some real improvements in that area. And so I just wanted to pull it off, not for any reason other than to say yay and thanks to the team in the Natural Resources Office for continuing to try to find money for these kinds of things and continuing to work on our high priority areas.
Thank you, council member. Any other comments, council? If not, council member, you want to move item 3.15?
I'd be delighted. I'm going to move a resolution to a grant agreement with the MN DNR, Expedited Conservation Projects, to grant Tarn Hill Oak Restoration.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muo to accept item 3.15 on tonight's consent agenda. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Now, let's double back to item 3.3, the Resolution to Accept Donations. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Always a fun time to talk to the, the folks in the public about how great people are here about donating to a variety of causes in the city. So thank you to everybody. We have some donations. This one in particular, a wonderful donation from Ms. Ellison for Duane Golf Courts to replace 1,000 maple trees there, which is pretty significant, in memory of Frances Kuehl, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. We also continue to get support for our Public Health Department for newborn baby bundles. We also have support for our BPD. They, there was donations made to sir, to support 20 youth and staff, giving them breakfast for the Holiday Helpers in Blue event, and then other donations to BPD. So thanks to Chick-fil-A, Veleo Pizza, and Clyde Wiss Hart. And finally, a $200 check to our Small Equipment Fund from Clyde Wiss Hart as well. And with that, just a thank you to the generous citizens, especially this time of year, generous residents of Bloomington, for all of their support in so many ways, including donating to the many departments that we have. With that, happy to, to move a resolution to accept these donations. Mr. Mayor?
We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muo to accept the resolutions to accept donations tonight, item 3.3 on the consent business. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And council, I neglected, there was actually a 3.23 in the republished agenda packet that was the, the amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement that was, that was walked on earlier today. Forgot that one. If there's any discussion on that, we can have that. Otherwise, I would move approval of item 2.3.23.
Second.
Motion by council, motion made, motion, second by Councilmember Lohman to accept item 3.23. Did, any questions on it, council? Councilmember Rivas, did you see that note?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can suggest we just do a quick.
Mr. Brugge?
Summary of it for Mr. Rivas.
Sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, Councilmember Rivas, the, the amendment to the employment agreement was related to section 16. C, which has to do with employee initiated termination and primarily distribution of accrued benefits, and just allows those, that distribution to be in the manner of the city manager's choosing.
Okay with that. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just for the public and Councilmember Rivas's information, this has zero budget impact, correct? It's, it's purely a timing issue or something like that.
It is. There's, there's no financial impact.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to accept item 3.23, the City Manager Employment Agreement Amendment. No further council discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Sorry, I missed that, Mr. Mayor.
I forgot it as well, council member. But thank you for taking that on, Councilmember Delisandro, a heavy lift this evening. We'll move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And we're going to start with item 4.1. This is a public hearing regarding a city code amendment, park dedication and planning standards ordinance. Nick Johnson from our planning staff is here. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, mayor and members. Good to see you again. Happy holidays. The project before you this evening in ordinance is yet another Planning Commission Work Plan project, and this one was brought to us by our colleagues in the legal department. So thanks to them for bringing this to our attention. Recently, there was a court case that went to the Minnesota State Supreme Court, Pous versus City of Burnsville, wherein a private party challenged the city of Burnsville's park dedication requirements related to their subdivision ordinance. And so the city of Burnsville's park dedication system survived that challenge and was affirmed by the state supreme court, so that's good. But in light of that, our legal department thought it'd be prudent to review Bloomington's park dedication standards to ensure that our system is in alignment with the findings of, of the courts. So that's what we did in this process and in this project. A note here, just on the nature of this project, is that it involves mostly mandatory, what we view as mandatory amendments to the city code, less policymaking or discretionary action items. But in addition to getting the opportunity to make those improvements, we did want to look at some areas of our subdivision ordinance that could use some refurbishing. So on the basis of that mandatory versus discretionary nature, this is the process that we went through. So our project started in July of this year. It did involve a wide internal staff team with parks and rec, finance, legal, planning, engineering, the city surveyor, and the like, everyone who's kind of got a hand in the subdivision and plating process. The planning commission, we did provide a study session for them just to get in the weeds. But then we did schedule a public hearing at the planning commission that took place on November the 21st. After limited discussion, they did recommend approval. So do have this before you, public hearing this evening. Just in terms of what constitutes the Bloomington Park Dedication methodology or process. So we're a little bit different in that most cities just offer a single pathway, and most of those use a percentage of undeveloped land to constitute or calculate their park dedication requirement. Bloomington, we do things, we offer an alternative path, and we give you the lesser of those two options. So that's positive in that we talk about proportional value calculation, and that's based on a 90-10 split between park and recreation facilities used by residential versus commercial industrial visitors to Bloomington. And we kind of get into the weeds of what each type, land use type brings to the city's park system via the latest data available. So it's a, it's a good methodology. It's strong. We update it routinely. Our analysis of our system resulted in that we thought it was very durable. And so actually, the changes that we're bringing for you in this ordinance really are just talking about what makes up the Bloomington Park System and demonstrating the need, as communicated in the comprehensive plan and the park system master, master plan. So with that, can provide just a summary of what this ordinance entails. Again, changes to the park dedication findings and purpose, that's just related to the court case and demonstrating the need for park and recreation facilities in Bloomington. One issue that we did want to rectify, and this is more of a discretionary item versus mandatory, is that for multi-phase developments, offering a pathway to provide for future payment of subsequent phases. You may have seen on planned developments that involve multiple phases, we've previously processed those as plating variances. The plating variance process doesn't align well with this request on the basis of what plating variance findings must be. So trying to create a pathway to do that via condition at the discretion of the city council and via development agreement. We are suggesting to add a new administrative lot line adjustment and lot consolidation process. This has to do with better alignment with state statutory requirements around plating. And then one thing that's also in that discretionary bucket is adding some additional exceptions to plating. If you recall, I think on a miscellaneous issues ordinance, one or two years ago, we brought to you an exception to plating for park facilities above a certain size. We'd like to extend that same exception to public schools. Those, those sites tend to be very large and costly to plat, and most of them were built before our current standards. So a lot of them are unplatted lots and would otherwise kind of inhibit or restrict school, public school projects on those sites. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions. We've tried to keep this one pretty narrow and discreet.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We like narrow and discreet. That's good. Council, any questions? Mr. Johnson? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you describe the scenarios in which plating is required? And do our requirements differ from any other communities around us when, when builder developer needs to plat and or replat?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so that's a good question. We actually, that was one of the clarifications we did make, is that when you have a lot that may have been platted and then may have gone through some other form of lot line adjustment or those things, our existing code actually would no longer deem the lot to be platted because it's a, a lot in hole and block, not to get too far in the weeds, but hole and block described parcel, which it no longer would be following a lot line adjustment. So that's one way in which we're out of step with state law currently, so we want to get back in there. But in terms of when, you know, when you need to be a platted lot, you certainly want to encourage lots to be platted. So typically, right now, it's whenever you're building a new structure on a lot. In order to get a building permit, you have to be a platted lot. It does allow exceptions up to a certain size of additions to that structure. You certainly want to create pathways to refinement. We didn't do an extensive search of other cities, but my guess is that because it's based on statutory language and strongly aligns with that, is that it's probably mostly pretty similar amongst other cities. However, that being said, my guess is that there's a wide variety of kind of approach or methodology in terms of when cities would enforce that. That's my guess.
Thank you for that information. The reason I bring that up is we did a project with MACV, and one of the barriers that they ran into is that they had to plat an existing single-family lot, and that was an unexpected item for them. And they indicated, I don't know if it's true or not, that that was an unusual step. And I don't want to get into that. What I'm wondering is, would that have and did that implement a park dedication fee based on that plating in that scenario? If there's already an existing lot, an existing house, or commercial or whatever, how, how does that work?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. So our park dedication requirements do allow for the extending of a credit. So when you're demolishing one structure and replacing a new, if it's functionally equivalent one dwelling to one dwelling, they would have been eligible for a credit and not paid additional park dedication fees. Not to zero in on that particular situation, but there are a lot of lots that have been platted or remain unplatted that were developed or constructed upon prior to the city having these current standards. So it's not, I'd say it's uncommon to have an unplatted lot, but it's not, it happens from time to time, put it that way.
Last quick comment. I was, when I read the Pous, sorry for the mispronunciation, versus City of Burnsville, City of Bloomington got like three mentions in there from the 60s, 70s, and 80s, I think, or cases. So well done, Bloomington.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, this is a rudimentary question that probably precedes any other question I have, and I apologize for that. The, the park dedication fees, where do they, are they assigned when we receive them in lieu of, are, are they just put in the Parks and Rec Departmental General Fund, or are they allocated in some specific way?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, so they're collected prior to the plat being released for recording, and they are calculated on a per-unit in effect basis, and it's done very early on in the development review process. After the funds are collected, it's my understanding, they are, I'm not the, the best world's best money guy, but they are, they are collected and utilized for capital expenditures, not ongoing staffing. And the reason for that is that it tends to fluctuate a lot on an annual basis.
Okay. And so, Mr. Brugge, does that mean that there's, that's just the, the overall capital budget, the capital fund, or the Parks and Rec specific capital fund?
Mr. Brugge? Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Delisandro, I'm pretty certain that the park dedication fees have to be used for projects that are, that meet the eligibility and criteria within the parks funds. Kari's coming up.
Ms. Carlson.
Mayor, council members, Councilmember Delisandro, the park dedication fees go to the park development capital fund.
Great, thank you.
So they are not in the general fund.
Right, okay. That's helpful. I'm just going to put a note in everybody's mind, that's another area where we could get a breakdown of how that fund gets built. If we have dedicated funds to it, it would be great to see that as a line item in a sub-bullet or something, and we talk about departmental funds and budgeting. Thanks. Okay, yeah, that's all my question. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for taking one for the team there, Nick. Appreciate it.
No problem. To Kari's defense, she, I think she prepped me on that question, and I just completely blanked on it, so.
Council, any additional questions? Mr. Johnson? Counsel, any additional questions, Mr. Johnson? If not, don't go far. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing at item 4.1. It's a public hearing regarding city code amendments, park dedication and plating standards ordinance. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak tonight on item 4.1? Ms. Holsman, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? No one coming forward, no one on the phone. Counsel, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing on item 4.1. Counsel, any additional questions or comments? Any concerns on this one? Councilmember Nelson?
No, thank you, Mayor, for a quick comment. I support this at this time. I think it's something to continue to monitor. And the only reason I bring that up is, you know, fees impact the cost of housing and other things, and so taking a look at those. But I believe that what we have done or what we're trying to do is put money into parks based on the impact that that development would have on the need for parks. So it meets the nexus, and I don't want to get into all the weeds, but there's a connection between that development and what the costs are going to, and that's why it's in a segregated fund. And then it's reasonably proportionate, and I think it's, you know, one of the amazing things about the city of Bloomington is we have a great park system and it makes a great city. And so I think it's very easy to say that it's reasonable that we, as we develop, we invest in those things. So obviously, I'm always concerned about the impact on the cost of housing. At this point, it seems very reasonable, and appreciate what staff has done on this.
Anything else, counsel? Hearing nothing? Counsel, I would look for action on item 4.1 this evening. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt an ordinance, completing minor amendment to the city's park dedication provisions, modifying the definition of plat lot, establishing an administrative lot line amendment in lot, consolidation application process and expanding exceptions to plat, thereby amending chapters 15, 22, and appendix A to the city code.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to adopt the ordinance, complete minor amendments to the city's park dedication provisions as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Loman, summary publication, please.
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of ordinance, completing a minor amendment to the city's park dedication provision, modifying the definition of plat lots, establishing an administrative lot line adjustments and lot consideration application process and expanding exceptions to plating, thereby amending chapters 15, chapter 22, and appendix A of the city code.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah for summary publication on item 4.2, or excuse me, item 4.1 summary publication. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate it. We will move on to item 4.2, which I think is the main event of the evening for most of the folks here. Thank you for being here. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, our Truth in Taxation 2025 Property Tax Levy and General Fund Budget. And just for everybody in attendance and watching this evening, this is how the game plan is going to go. Ms. Carlson's got a presentation. Counsel will ask any follow-up questions, although we've, we've rung this through the ringer about eight times now. I don't know that there'll be any additional questions, but we will have an opportunity for questions. We will open the public hearing, and folks who wish to speak to the public hearing, if you could just kind of line up and make sure, we're going to need you to sign in and so on. We have our, our shot clock, as we call it. You'll have five minutes to speak, and when the clock hits zero, I will cut you off. And not because I'm mean, but because I want to make sure that everybody has the same amount of time to, to talk tonight, and so you will have five minutes. And if you ask specific questions, what we'll do is we'll jot down all the questions and we'll answer the questions en masse after the public hearing is over. That way, we don't, we're not shooting from the hip. We have a chance for staff to do any research that might be necessary or come up with the answers that are appropriate to, to the questions that are asked. So that is how we're going to do it. That'll be the game plan. And as I said, we're going to start with a budget presentation by Kari Carlson. Good evening and welcome again.
Good evening again, mayor and council. As the mayor said, tonight I will provide some information for the Truth in Taxation public hearing for the 2025 property tax levy and budget. And then also joining me this evening in the council chambers is city assessor Tim Bolger, who's standing up right there. He is available to answer questions related to assessed property values, homesteaded properties, the state's property tax refund program, and the senior deferral property tax program. And Mr. Bolger, Bolger will be available in the lobby outside the council chambers to assist with specific questions about individual property valuations. Before I begin the presentation, I just want to acknowledge the concerns shared by some residents regarding property tax increases and the rising costs that have affected city budgets have also impacted residents, and especially those on fixed incomes. And balancing the need to fund community services with the financial realities faced by our residents is a complex and challenging task. In response to these concerns, the city council directed staff to reduce the preliminary budget adopted in September. The budget being presented tonight reflects a reduction of nearly $2 million compared to the proposed budget that was, the preliminary property tax statements were based on, that were mailed in November. The 2025 proposed budget aligns with the city's key strategic priorities of a connected and welcoming community, a healthy community, and a community of equitable economic growth. We began working on this budget back in May and followed this budget calendar. Over the past several months, this has involved numerous discussions with staff and city council, analysis, refinements to align with the city's priorities and the financial outlook. Now we've reached the final stage of this budget process, and we're at the Truth in Taxation public hearings taking place this evening. So this marks getting towards the conclusion of this important annual budget process. I'd like to take a moment just to review our public engagement around the budget. From June to October, we engaged with the community to discuss budget and city spending at city events. We found that we've, are able to talk to a lot more people if we go out into the community where they are as opposed to holding events here or doing things virtually online. So this year, we were at the Juneteenth Celebration, a July Wednesday farmer's market, the Learning Linkup at Valley View Playfields that was in conjunction with the school district, at the On the One Music Festival in the South Loop. We were at a Saturday farmer's market all day. We were at the Pride Festival and the Fire Department Open House. And included in the evening's agenda materials that were published is the feedback from both the community in-person events and also some responses on our Let's Talk Bloomington online survey. As a review, our, our budget tables at community events feature an activity where participants use chips that represent property taxes and allocating them across six categories based on their priorities. They have the opportunity to put them all in one or split them however they think that the city should be spending the money. From the data collected from those seven events throughout the year, parks, arts, recreation, and natural resources received the most chips with 23% of the total, and public safety had the second most at 19%. As I said, we also had a similar activity online on the Let's Talk Bloomington budget page, and on the survey, the same categories could be ranked in priorities on a scale of one to six, with one being the highest priority. And on the online survey, facilities and infrastructure was ranked as the highest priority, followed by public safety. We also maintain a comprehensive budget website where we post budget, all the budget presentations, detailed budget information, the video explaining property tax statements and valuations, and all of the recorded council budget discussions. The one we're having right now will be posted tomorrow. The 2025 budget reflects the city's mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. It supports high-quality city services with strategic investments in public safety, community health, and recreation, and equitable economic growth. The overall proposed tax levy is shown here. Majority is in the general fund. It's an increase from 2024 of just approximately 7.4 million, which is $2 million lower than the preliminary levy approved by council in September, which is a reduction from that original 11 and 1/2% for the city tax levy to a 9.18% increase. The impact of the revised proposal of a 9.18% increase to the tax levy would be a 6.85% increase for the median value home, which translates to $1.87 per week, $8.12 a month, or $97.41 a year. How this compares to the rest of the state? On November 14th, Minnesota Department of Revenue released the preliminary 2025 tax levy for the state of Minnesota. Combined, cities on average increased by 8.8% with their tax levies, counties 6.4%, townships 6.3%, schools 4.4%, and then special taxing districts 5.7%. And here's a comparison of this, Bloomington's R updated 9.18% 2025 tax levy they're presenting to you tonight, highlighted in green, compared to the published preliminary 2025 tax levy increases in some other comparable cities around us in the metro. Here's the list of changes made since September to the, the budget and tax levy of nearly $2 million. This includes the same adjustments that were shared with the council during last week's meeting and discussion, along with a few additional measures that council directed us. Last week, we were at 9.25%, and it came down to 9.18% with those adjustments. Here's the 2025 general fund revenues. The numbers are on the left, and then the graph, to see it visually, on the right. In the graph, you'll see, I went a little too bit far. In the graph, you'll see the majority of the revenues for the general fund do come from property taxes. Doesn't all come from property taxes, but 69% does. And then the next highest source of revenue coming in to, to fund the general fund is from lodging and admission taxes, which is back to pre-pandemic levels. And those revenues fund these departments that are in the general fund. So on the right-hand side of, of the graph here, you'll see that police is definitely the majority of the general fund budget, and that police, fire, public works, and parks and recreation together, those account for about 71% of the overall general fund budget. So we oftentimes look at it and by department for expenses. We also have in this presentation how it looks in the high-level categories like salaries and benefits, material supplies and services, and internal charges. You'll see that a significant portion of the general fund budget does support the public servants who deliver the services and salaries and benefits. Here's a sample property tax statement for the median value home. So those property tax statements don't just have the city portion of the property taxes, it also has the county, school district, and the other taxing jurisdictions. So the city's portion of the property tax statement is roughly a third of the overall property tax amount. And on the left is the amount of showing the city property tax with that preliminary 11 and 1/2% increase that was approved in September. And the one on the right is now showing tonight the 9.18%. And then if you look, the only thing that's changed between those two is the city one, and that has gone down $41. And then these next two slides I'm going to talk about are about the information for the state of Minnesota's property tax refund program. Homeowners and renters in Minnesota may qualify for a refund, which offers property tax relief based on income and property taxes paid. And for more details, residents can visit the Minnesota Department of Revenue website that's shown here, or call either of these phone numbers. And there are two different types of refunds available on the state of Minnesota, M1 PR property tax refund form. There's the regular property tax refund, which compares property taxes to total household income, and the special property tax refund, which applies to tax increases of 12% or more and at least $100 increase. The tax refund forms are due August 15th, but they may be filed up to one year after the due date. And just also to qualify for a refund, those properties must be homesteaded. There's also a senior property tax deferral program that caps annual property taxes at 3% of the previous year's income. The remaining taxes are deferred until the property is sold or the deferral is canceled, at which point the deferred amount plus interest must be repaid in full. And to qualify, the applicant must be 65 years of age or older, and if married, their spouse must be 62 years of age or older. Household income must be less than $96,000. The applicant must have lived in the homestead, of the, homesteaded property for at least five years, and the loan accrues interest, which varies but does not exceed 5%. And the Bloomington City Assessor's Office is available to assist residents with questions about this program. And as mentioned earlier, city assessor Tim Bolger is in the council chambers and is available tonight, is available to answer questions. So that concludes my presentation on the 2025 budget tax levy. I appreciate the opportunity to share this information and the work that has gone into this year's budget process.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Council questions of Ms. Carlson? Councilmember Loman?
So just, really just one question, and I already asked it earlier, but I just want the public to have the, the benefit of hearing that, that question. I know when we started off before, there was a slide that had our preliminary levy of 11.25, or that preliminary levy, and the corresponding increase for the out-year of 2026 was approximately 15, 15% that we'd start off with. And now that we've reduced our, by the good work of the staff, bringing it down in the direction of the council, down 2%, what does that now look like for 2026?
Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Loman? I'll just start by saying that is a starting place for 2026, so a projection based on what we know now and factoring in different considerations, such as not having any tax levy stabilization used for the 2026 budget, but having just preliminary. I don't have that right here, but I don't know if you have that, city manager, but I think it was close to 18%.
Yeah, 17.92%. Sorry, I didn't want to put you on the spot. I thought maybe you had it for you.
And that also would include an almost 5% increase just for debt service for capital.
And right now, our, our debt service was 0.56% or something like that in our current budget that we're looking at, so that's percentage increase. So just trying to put this all in context in terms of what this looks like, what we're doing today, so, thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Rivas?
I just have a comment or perhaps a suggestion on this. I know that we're anticipating having an 18% increase for 2026, right? So if, if, from what I hear, please correct me if I misunderstood the explanation. So if it's 18% now, now would be the time to look at cuts to unnecessary things that we, maybe we deem unnecessary at this point, but that could have an impact in the future that we could save millions of dollars on. maybe we deem unnecessary at this point, but that could have an impact in the future that we could save millions of dollars on. Yeah, cause uh, I mean, at this point, um, I, you know, uh, uh, please forgive me because I don't have the, the recollection of discussing all these items at the very beginning of the year. Um, I mean, I was probably having too much information in my brain that I was, I was overwhelmed at that point. Uh, but if I, I'm sure that if I go back to that, I can find uh, answers to my questions right now. But, but my point is that at this particular point, if we're anticipating for twenty twenty six, uh, an increase of eighteen percent possible. Uh, uh, you know, a levy of eighteen percent, uh, we should be looking at this point right now, perhaps to cut more on this budget before we pass it, so we have a better idea what we can do for next year. Because uh, um, I don't think it's sustainable for a lot of uh, elderly people living in the area. Um, i- it's uh, and I know it's something that uh, probably we don't want to hear right now, but I don't believe it's sustainable. I, I have a lot of people emailing me even not from my district uh, concerned about the fact that it's a very high increase. Um, I know another comment I want to make is that if we take into consideration the franchise fees, even though.
Councilmember Rivas. Can, can, let's stick to questions now, let's have the public hearing and then we'll have the comments. We can have the discussion afterward, that's typically how we do it.
Yeah, but you know, I haven't had the opportunity to say what I need to say because I'm always being cut when I'm actually trying to say it. I know it might sound funny to any of us on a view, but the, the reality is. Can you just please be quiet and let me finish? I would appreciate.
Councilmember, councilmembers.
Seriously, I, I mean, and this is, it's been taking place every time whenever I want to.
Councilmember Rivas, excuse me. The way we set, with the way we handle our public hearings is we ask questions ahead of time, we get the public hearing, and then we, then there is the opportunity for council comment and, and opinion. But we, we get the questions out of the way first. What we want, don't want to do is put your, your commentary ahead of the public hearing comment.
Okay, on that note, let me just ask a question then. When we pay the benefits for all the staff, uh, do we also include their family members? Or is it just for the, for the employee?
Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Rivas, there, there are options for employees to choose either a um, employee only health insurance plan or two person or family. And the city does contribute towards a portion um, of the, of all of those plans. The employees pay more for the two person or family plans, but um, the dependence of an employee, there is an option to bring those onto the health insurance.
That is common practice in any business, but if I can rephrase my question is uh, how much is, what's the percentage of a contribution the city uh, provides for the employee to bring their family into the benefit?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, councilmember Rivas, that amount varies depending on the plan. Um, so uh, the percentage is different for an employee or an employee plus one or a family. Uh, and when we look at it across all of those plans, uh, the blended rate is in the neighborhood of about ninety two percent. Is that what the number was this year?
Eighty two percent of the contribution.
Mayor, if I might, um, we approved that earlier this evening on consent. Those reimbursements, they were all in.
We did, and we, we, we've had the presentation, I think, I can't recall when, but within the last couple of months, we did have the presentation from HR, but.
So the contribution to the city, again, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this. The contribution the city does for a family member or of one or two or three is ninety two percent?
I, I think that's where it shakes out on the average depending on, again, individual, individual plus one family, that kind of thing.
So, so my question is, you know, that could be a great savings. I mean, no business that I know of includes.
Again, councilmember, questions? And we'll have the commentary and the, the opinion option afterward.
Well, that's it, thank you, uh, that's sufficient for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additional questions tonight on the presentation that we saw? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Carlson, don't go far, I'm sure we'll have additional questions as we go here. With that, I will open the public hearing on item four point two this evening. This is our twenty twenty five truth and taxation hearing. As I mentioned, what I would appreciate is uh, if you folks, if, if you would like to speak, if you could just kind of line up right down the center aisle and basically the clipboard down the middle, just, just hand it back and we, make sure we get everybody signed in. So then we don't have to spend time waiting for people to get signed in and, and registered. And as I said, you'll have five minutes and I will cut you off at the five minutes and we will answer any questions uh, as a, as a group at the end of the, of truth and taxation hearing, so. And what I'll need you to do as you come up, if you just identify yourself, we'll just need your, your name for the, the record. Yep.
Should I sign in first or?
Why don't you do that, since you're first in line, why don't you sign in quick and then hand it back and we can start the, the daisy chain. Very good. Good evening, welcome.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name's John Hoopmacher, I live at eighty three eleven West Hundred Tenth Street. I've been a resident since nineteen ninety two. And I'm hoping that this meeting is not just lip service from the council, that maybe you will actually listen and hear our concerns. My proposed property tax shows a property value increase of about two percent with a total increased tax of eleven percent. And apparently I'm one of the lucky ones because my city portion is going up nearly thirteen percent, even though you're talking about nine point one eight percent. Thirteen percent is well over five times the current inflation rate that we're dealing with across the country. When will it end? Over the last several years, the city has continued to increase its costs with no end in sight. Some of my examples that I, I've seen, the city has its own earned sick and safe leave legislation and personnel to monitor it. The E S S L is now state law. All the local legislation that we have here and the personnel we have here should be immediately eliminated. Several years ago, the city, in my opinion illegally added managed garbage collection. The city fought this all the way to the state Supreme Court, which cost us more money as we put money in for you to fight people that didn't agree with you. The city was found to be in violation of its own charter and I'm still convinced to this day that if I got my own hauler, my price would be the same and the city could reduce staff and expenses in that area as well. The city's add smoking legislation on the books, it's irrelevant as we have a statewide ban. This should be eliminated. The city also has added smoking regu- regulations which essentially has made any tobacco store worthless within the city limits. You've impacted business owners in a negative way. However, the city has no problem adding more liquor stores. Case in point, Bobby and Steve's down in Normandale and Old Chocopee. Just what we need, can't swing a dead cat in the city without hitting a liquor store, but we have another one. The old Thunderbird property is now city owned, even though there was a private property, private party that was interested in purchasing the land. The Port Authority, the city outbid the private party and took the land off the market. We have no tax dollars coming from that piece of property. How many thousands of dollars have we spent on the World's Fair bid as well as the unneeded water park? The city eliminated our DMV spot and added thousands of dollars of additional personnel. Most recently, the council, along with the city manager, endorsed and promoted the city sales tax. Though this is not part of the general fund, it impacts our city residents and the people that visit us. It's my understanding it was supposed to be a hundred and fifty five million dollar investment in the city. Now, after a few different meetings that I've seen and heard, seems like it's getting closer to a hundred and seventy five or a hundred and eighty million dollars. It feels like we, the residents, were clearly misled on what the costs were going to be. The sales tax should be immediately suspended until you can clearly tell us what the cost was, is going to be. It is not an open checkbook because you have sales tax coming in. These are all examples of areas that expenses can be reduced, which can help our property taxes, people behind me. There is a pervasive budgeting process within the city, the county, the school board. And that is that the city or whoever it is needs to have, needs to have and has to have its funding no matter what. The city has no ability to cut costs or reexamine those costs and we, the residents, the people sitting behind me, just have to deal with it and too bad for you guys. I expect better from the city council and the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. And folks, I just want to say, I, I would appreciate it if you would respect the decorum of the council chambers. We're not going to applaud, we're not going to boo if somebody else comes up and offers something different than what you're thinking. We're just going to listen to what people have to say, we're going to respect what they say and you can nod in agreement and, and you know, maybe give them a high five on the way back to their chair. But we're not going to boo, we're not going to applaud, we're not going to cheer. We're going to respect the, the decorum of the council chambers. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Cheryl Patterson and I have been a resident in Bloomington for about thirty eight years. First of all, I wanted to thank Mr. Rivas and Mr. Nelson for at least saying that we shouldn't keep spending. But at the end of the vote, everybody votes yes. So I just wanted to say today that I noticed in tw- I looked up in twenty twenty two, we had a levy increase in December, twenty nine, twenty twenty two of nine point fifteen percent. In twenty three, seven point nine, seven percent. And now we're going to have another tax levy this year and probably next year. So we've made lots of improvements in Bloomington, a couple of been to Kennedy and Jefferson High Schools for community centers where we could all swim and run. Nobody uses those anymore, but we've spent all kinds of our money. I know government has a hard time staying in budget, but I would appreciate revisiting that because we voted for all of you guys to represent us so that we wouldn't be taxed out of our homes. My husband and I are sixty six and sixty eight. We work full time, we both have cancer. We haven't been to these parks because we are too busy working to pay these taxes. So I would appreciate some compassion in thinking about us and how hard we are working to try to maintain Bloomington someplace we do like. We can enjoy the parks because we're too busy working. A couple of recommendations I have, I have been a nurse manager in big city hospitals. I appreciate that the police department needs some temporary staffing. When I was a nurse manager, we brought in travelers. They're very expensive, they're short term and they don't, they're just filling in a hole. We need to get those positions filled that are probably already budgeted for. Another thing I read is that we're going to improve a park. Half of the year, the parks are dark and cold, but we'll be paying property taxes all year. One of the parks is Trit, Trayball Park for bike skills. Mow the grass in that park, trim the trees and let the kids create a park. Let them pick, create the bike skills that they want to have. We adults don't need to be doing that. Another thing that came in on the flyer is that we're going to put adaptive playground equipment in a park. We need to repurpose some equipment, make it nice for kids that need a more adaptive playground. But most of all, I just want to say, please think of us. We can't be paying all these taxes. Everything's so expensive, groceries, trying to buy a new car, trying to fill up our cars with gas and it's just too much. So I just ask you tonight, please think of us as you are uh, trying to figure out this budget and please live within your means and our means. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jolene Bergerson, more than thirty year resident of Bloomington. First, I believe, I'm, I'm assuming correctly that all of you expect residents to be following city codes and that the businesses that are located in Bloomington and do business in Bloomington are properly licensed and current with their licensures. Um, however, this is not the standard that's being followed by the city manager and city council when spending our tax dollars. And specifically, I'm speaking of, of the Bloomington Theater and Arts Company, uh, doing business as Artistry. A nonprofit, according to the Minnesota Attorney General's Office, must register, submit their financials. And if they don't, it is a violation of Minnesota law to solicit in Minnesota without being registered. And that's according to Minnesota Statute three zero nine point five one five point five seven subdivision one. I will let you know that I have done a lot of research and I've been in touch with the Minnesota Attorney General's Office since twenty twenty three. I have all the backup. Artistry has not been registered legally with the Minnesota Attorney General's Office since two thousand nineteen. Just in.
I, I appreciate the information, we will look into that, but the specific public hearing here is on the.
Well, it's how you're spending our tax money. They were not registered and you gave them thirty thousand dollars and then another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Do you have any comments on the, the taxing, the, the levy?
This is all included.
Levy.
We know that artistry and the cultural arts are receiving money, our money. And it's also being funneled through creative placemaking as well. So if you're going to spend our tax monies, you better be well insured that those entities that you are doing business with, especially a nonprofit, legally get to get our tax money. And if you want a further conversation, I have all of the information from the AG's office, including three letters of violation from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and Council, my name's Rick Oliva. Um, after hearing the first speaker, I think I, I should feel lucky because my property value actually went down, so my proposed increase on my uh, statement only went up by four point six percent. Um, I understand things cost more money as we go on. Um, and so uh, what I would like is, and this is sus- sustainable for me now because it's only four point six percent. But what happens in a year from now, two years from now, when my property value goes back up, then it skyrockets, right? And so what I would like to see is um, what would make me ecstatic is if when my property values went down, I at least didn't pay more. Uh, preferably pay less. What I think, what I would be fine with would be, I, I believe uh, the slide said that the average is eight point eight percent across the state. Right now, we're sitting at nine point one eight percent, it's not bad, but if it was at least just, okay, this is what everybody else is paying, then I'd be fine. I wouldn't be happy about it, but it's like, okay. You know, this is just what it's going to cost to do business to, you know, to live in Bloomington. So I'd like you to just consider if there's anything else that you can do to bring it down a little bit more, because I think one of the hard parts is we talk a lot about affordable housing, but when the property taxes keep going up, the housing becomes less affordable. Um, the other thing would be, I don't know if you did this, uh, I'm a little bit late to the game. But if you just said, hey, if we didn't increase taxes at all, if we kept them exactly where they are, these are the cuts that we'd have to make, they'd be deep, then the people could see it and say, well, that would be horrible. I'm willing to pay, you know, to have these things that I want. Or they might say, you know what? We're fine with that, go ahead and do it. But I think if you gave people that option and it's, you know, it might be a shock and awe type thing, but I think that would uh, also be helpful, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Oliva.
Hello, City Council, uh, Andy Thule, uh, fifty three years, right, fifty three years resident of uh, Bloomington. Um, I think there's a, going to be a financial cliff um, coming to Bloomington and it'll actually be here sooner than, than we think, but with that eighteen percent we're proposing next year. Let me, let me just give an example, we just raised property tax about a, or half a percent for sales tax. And in doing so, the community, the community center that's planned had surface level parking, it looks like we're going to have potential twenty two million dollar parking ramp. I don't know where the money is going to come from for that. Um, obviously, the community center is going to need, need to be staffed, right? So we got all the benefits and the staffing that will be coming, you know, for, for all taxpayers to pay. Um, I believe the cost of this community center is going to be heavily subsidized by the taxpayers as well, so. But that half a percent sales tax, a lot of people are driving elsewhere, not very sustainable, you know, to, to save money to not pay the sales tax. Um, there's one thing that a lot of companies are dumping right now, it's called diversity, equity and inclusion. Hasn't done anything for the city, our neighbors are neighbors, I live on the east side, very diverse neighborhood, we love each other. Um, looks like we spent four hundred and forty some thousand um, in the diversity, equity and inclusion department. I think we could abolish that, kind of follow Walmart and many other companies' leads in that regard and get rid of it altogether. Uh, the firefighter grant, uh, federally funded grant, eventually we're going to have to fund all these full time firefighters. That's going to hit the taxpayers very hard, you know, it's going to be coming, you know, quickly. Um, one thing I noticed too, we've restructured our city managers. The managers pay was listed as assistant city managers at two, it was one hundred ninety to two hundred one thousand, whereas the median wage of assistant city managers about ninety six thousand, so over double this, the median salary for assistant city managers. Looks like I saw recently, we're going to be facing some kind of fifty five million dollars worth of water and sewer upgrades, kind of coming our way. Um, who knows if the Nine Mile Creek is going to run over budget? It sounds like the Bloomington Ice Guards might need more money than what was projected. Um, so basically, I work for the government myself, right? And I know that people can live within a budget if they lay things out kind of systematically year after year. There isn't some percentages that you can cut from each department if you're actually fiscally responsible. What we need in this city is a city manager who can actually. What we need in this city is a city manager who can actually run a pocketbook or a checkbook. I'm looking at you, Mr. Verbrugge. You've ran the city in the ground, and it shows, and it's very sad. Thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Roger Avard. I've been a resident in East Bloomington for over thirty years now. So recently, I received a call from my, or text from my son-in-law, who lives in South St. Paul, and he said that his property taxes were going down two percent. So I was kind of excited, waiting for my statement to show up. And of course, I was somewhat feelings of consternation when I realized that mine, no mine, like last year, are going up eleven percent. So that motivated me to dig into some numbers a little bit. So the Minnesota Department of Revenue has a website that suggests people look at it that's got a spreadsheet that basically has the preliminary city levies for all the cities in Minnesota. So I looked at the ones around us and just did a little bit of number crunching on my own on dividing the city levy by the number of residents for each of the cities. And so for Eagan, for example, if you do that, you, per resident, they're paying seven hundred and eighty-four dollars in property tax. In Burnsville, it's eight hundred and sixteen. In Savage, it's seven hundred and seventy-three. In Shakopee, it's five hundred and sixty-seven. Eden Prairie is eight hundred and three. Ridgefield's eight hundred and twenty. You get to Bloomington, though, and you do that same calculation, and at least with the initial, the preliminary levy, it was a thousand, twenty-six dollars. Even with the revised number that I saw tonight, it still works out to around a thousand dollars. So for some reason, our residents are paying twenty-five percent more in property taxes than the cities around us. I don't know why that is. I haven't been following, I'll be honest, I haven't really been following what the city's been doing the last few years, but I've gotten these, a couple of these increases. And it seems like Bloomington is out of line with the rest of these cities. These other cities have full-time fire departments, they have police departments, they have city maintenance workers that, you know, fill the potholes of their streets, and they seem to be getting by on a much less per-resident than we do in Bloomington, so. And I notice in the communications that we get that there's, you know, there's this constant mantra that we're supposed to be, you know, making way for affordable housing, and the problem is, is now, you know, if you get the housing affordable, you can't afford to pay the taxes on the house. And, and also, I'm not aware that any of these other surrounding cities have pushed, I mean, we've pushed some items of our budget onto the sales tax, you know, the Moynihan Park, the Ice Garden, the Creekside Community, and we still have way above all our neighboring cities. So that's my concern, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Did we lose the pen?
All good, all good. I'll write it after. Hi, thank you. My name is Jen Pillar Quaid, and I live on Eighty-second and Washburn. Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for having this meeting tonight. I didn't have a planned speech because I didn't know if I wanted to speak or not, but I do second what everybody else has said. Also, I wanted to say that, like, how proud I am to live in Bloomington because I do think that we do run a lot better than other cities just based on friends and family I have that live in cities that surround us. But I do think that being fiscally responsible moving forward, because if we, you know, have a nine percent increase this year, but then eighteen percent, you know, increase next year, it's the same thing if we do an eleven this year and sixteen next year, you know, it's just, it's going to be the same however it works out. So just really considering, you know, what we can cut, what we, you know, what's unnecessary, what's a high priority, what's, you know, like, how we can all live in, within our means, like, that we have to do as, you know, homeowners. You know, we can't control the cost of everything, but I do think that really having the thoughtfulness and, again, considering, you know, the residents, because we do all really love the city. I mean, why would people stay here for decades? But, you know, just, just something to consider, and that's really all I have. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolsmann, do we have anyone on the line wishing to speak tonight?
Mr. Mayor, there's no one online.
Others who want to speak tonight? Please, come on forward.
Thank you. Marilyn Adams, I live at Eighty-Fourth and Cal, and I've been in Bloomington since 2013. I just have a question about the presentation, so I'm not sure if I interpreted something correctly or maybe didn't catch it clearly. So I wanted to ask, did you mention that it was something like fifteen million comes in to the budget from, was it commercial real estate, like, the hotel industry, or was that fifteen million around there? And then another fifteen million comes in from community fees for park and community ed-type things? Seems to me that, I don't know, that just seemed kind of funny that the whole huge industry would contribute fifteen million, and then individuals would also, for taking a class in, you know, polka dancing or something, would have to pay fees high enough that would be equal to what a whole industry contributes. So I just, I don't know if I'm, did I miss something? It seems like they would have a lot more than the individual people would be-
We'll clarify that at the wrap-up. We'll definitely do that, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Adams. Others wishing to speak tonight? Robert, I'd be disappointed if you didn't come forward. Come on.
Hi, my name is Robert Coleman. I've lived in Bloomington since 2009, and I, I rent an apartment, obviously, so I don't immediately see, you know, I don't see the property tax statement, there isn't the sticker shock, but I, in general, I'm supportive of the continuation of service for this year. It does seem pretty clear that next year, there has to be cuts, and I, I'm sure that there will be a lot of people who are very angry about that. And I will be too. Like, I love Bloomington so much, and if you think about, like, Plymouth right there at the bottom of that list, I, I've been to Plymouth multiple times, and it doesn't seem like they have a lot of things to offer that Bloomington does. No offense to them, but, you know. And there is just the fact of how our cities are designed, that some cities are designed to be more expensive than others. When, in the nineteen seventy census, Bloomington was ninety-eight point seven percent white, and that wasn't an accident. And it just, I'm sure that in some other communities in the metro area that are also designed to be expensive, that there will be that sticker shock when they mature and when they have roads that need to be rebuilt and buildings that are, you know, that need to be replaced. It just seems that we're ahead of the curve, and just everything goes up every year. It's just a fact of life. I, surely, there must have to be cuts next year, and that's fine with me. I just hope that they aren't as devastating as I seem to currently expect them to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Others wishing to speak? This is your chance. All right, last call. There we go. Mr. Clark, good evening.
Good evening. I can't resist. I'll keep this short. You guys can't keep doing this. Every year, it's the same thing. You start out with a double-digit increase, and then you whittle it down until it's right below ten percent to make it look like we're getting a good deal, and we're not. That list of fifteen cities you had, only five of them have a higher tax increase than we do. Five of them have seven percent or lower. What are they doing that's different than what we're doing? So I don't know. I don't know what we have to do as a, as a community to begin to rein this in. If we have to put a referendum on the ballot next year so that any tax increase over five percent goes to the voters, I don't know what we have to do. But you've heard from people here, and you've heard from other people as well, something has to give. And people are having to work more to pay more taxes for services that they don't use, and somewhere the models, it's broken. I know you got a tough job, and I know the staff has put a lot of work into this. I don't discount that at all. But we're going to see things in Washington, they're going to revolutionize how government is viewed, how government is funded, and we got to start bringing some of that thinking to Bloomington. That's all I'm encouraging you to do. So I don't have any specific things. I think it's more of a philosophical thing. You're going to see changes at the national level that are going to have to start impacting how we think of government, how we think of funding government, how we think of services, how we think of, because if we had a recession, you'd make cuts. And as Councilmember Reva said, if we're already looking at an eighteen percent next year, which I'm sure that'll get whittled down, but let's just say it's eighteen percent, why not look at the cuts now? And I'm not saying cut to cut, but become more efficient, to become more efficient at what we do. So that's the challenge I'd put before you. Try to find ways to become more efficient, to do more with less. And I'm sure you look at that, and you're sure you think about that, but somewhere, there's a, there's something with the paradigm that every year, we have to keep increasing things at exponential rates. I mean, you put a nine percent increase on top of a seven percent increase on top of a nine, that's not twenty-five percent increase, that's like a forty percent increase because it's exponential. So I don't know. I don't know what the solution is, but clearly, we have to start looking at what government is, what it means to the community. Government does a lot of good things in Bloomington. It plays a real role. But we got to start looking at the funding model, and so people really feel that there's value. Because there are some cities where they pay a lot more in property taxes, but for whatever reason, they feel like they're getting more value for it. So what is it about Bloomington where, where there's, there's not the perception of the value for the amount that people are paying? So that's all I encourage you to do. It's, I mean, there's, I don't know what you're going to do about this year's budget. I would encourage you to take another swipe, try to get it down some more. But going forward, there's, there's got to be a fundamental shift in the paradigm and how we think about government services, how it's funded, and the whole, the whole concept of, of how does efficiency fit into that? We can't just keep coming back to people for more and more and more, because at some point, the people will revolt. They'll move. They'll pass a referendum to make you guys go to the voters if you go for more than five percent. They'll start short-paying the property taxes. They'll do something, but they're not going to keep paying, handing over their money willy-nilly for what they perceive as excessive tax increases. It's, it's, people will reach a breaking point. So anyway, I'll, I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Others, last call. All right, Council, I see no one coming forward. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point two this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah to close the public hearing on item four point two. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. So, Council, now we're to the point of responding to what we've heard, responding to any of the things that we've seen in the budget presentations, although we've had a number of different cracks at it over the past few months to try and, and put together this budget and to bring our opinions forward to, to staff and to talk amongst ourselves about where we'd like to go. So I, so now, Councilmember Reva, this would be the appropriate point. If you've got, if you've got statements to make, I don't want you to think that you're being cut off, which frankly, kind of puzzles me that you might think that, because we offered the opportunity. Please, chime on in.
I don't, thank you, Mayor. I don't, it's the interruption from my fellow council members, though. You have witnessed that more than once, and I know, I appreciate that, because I try to be as polite as possible with everybody else in here. We're all passionate about, passionate about what we believe. I'm not any exception to that. The one thing that I do want to make a point is, there are things that the city, in my opinion, there are things that the city doesn't really need to have at this point. You know, and, as I say this, it might not be a popular thing with a good number of people out there, because it's a fact. I mean, some people do want the amenities the city is offering, others people, other people don't care about it. And it's not that I don't care. As I have stated in the past, the council, you, Mayor, Mr. Verbrugge, you have done a wonderful job in a lot of the things that the city has accomplished. I don't take any of that away. What I'm trying to say is that due to the fact that a lot of people are struggling, especially in my district, I don't know about the rest, because I try not to get too involved, even though I do get a lot of emails of people complaining. I try not to get too involved with that. I respond when I find that nobody is responding to them. But the reality is that it doesn't personally affect me financially, what we, you know, whatever the levy is, is not affecting my home in any way whatsoever. But I keep in mind that I was elected by the people to represent them and not to represent myself. I do like the fact that, again, and I will reiterate this, that as a council, as a mayor, as a city manager, you have accomplished a lot of great things that I do like, even though I don't get to enjoy it. I do like the fact that the city is modernizing, and you guys have done a lot. But there are, there are times that, in spite of all of that, there are times that we need to do cuts. I mean, you know, I wish I could have a brand-new boat compared to the one I have. I can't, I don't want to make the expense because I'm planning on other things, but that's the mentality that I come with. The city can do the same. There are things that, you know, it's going to sound controversial, but I'm going to say it anyway. DEI, the community outreach, to me, is not important. Seriously, I think that we approach each other as neighbors, and we create that friendship and that familiarity with each other, that we don't need all this. And those are expenses that, I am a hundred percent that the entire council might disagree with me with this, and that's fine. I, like I said, this is my opinion, and I think a lot of the funds that are being spent on these things is just totally unnecessary, including, you know, most companies are now putting these things away because it's not working for them. It's creating problems, and I'm not going to say that is because they have chosen to choose, to hire, you know, particular people, it's just because they're concerned with issues that they shouldn't be concerned with. Companies are supposed to deliver a type of business, they shouldn't be concerned with societal things. And the city, to me, what I interpret as the city having for the residents is parks, yes, absolutely, there are kids that need to go play outdoors, maintenance of the roads and everything like that. I don't think DEI and community outreach and the arts even, if I want to go enjoy a show, I go pay for it. I don't do it ten times a year, maybe a couple, two or three times. You know, there are things that a lot of people, I identify with what they say because to me, it's an amenity that I'll look for it, even if I had to look outside the city. It's not something that is absolutely necessary for us to have here. And again, it's just my opinion and the opinion of a lot of the residents that put me here. And that's what I'm saying, that because I do agree with them from that point of view. You know, it's not absolutely necessary. Of course, everybody has a different opinion. But that said, thank you for giving me the opportunity to say it, and thanks for not interrupting me. I know that you have passionate ways of looking at things, and I respect that. But I also, with that respect, which I'm going to say something that I normally don't say, I expect the same kind of respect to be given to me, because I have a right to have that opinion as well. And that said, you know, I'll listen to anybody. I'm pretty much very, I'm more pragmatic than I am what most people think. I'm very conservative. I'm not really. If you can sell something to me and you convince me of it, I'll align with you. But if I don't see the value of that, I'm just going to oppose it. And, you know, and I will- oppose it. And, and you know, and I will try to state my opinion on that. That said, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to have, to save my mind on this.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Loman, but before we get to you, I realize we, we've got to answer, we, we heard a lot of opinions. We had one specific question from Ms. Adams about the fees and the liquor and lodging and clarify, to clarify some of that. Um, so Ms. Adams, where, where did you go? There you are. Uh, in our general fund revenues, that slide that you saw, that pie chart, uh, yes, the liquor and, or the lodging and admission taxes account for eleven million dollars a year. And that's about ten percent of our general fund revenue for the year. The slide that was underneath it, or the piece that was underneath it was called permits and licenses. That's not the fees that you pay to go to the, you know, to, to the aquatic center or to, to take a class. Those permits and licenses are things, licenses, uh, like liquor licenses or tobacco licenses. The permits are, the permits that are pulled for electrical work or building permits, that type of thing. So those, those are the permits and licenses that we're talking about. That accounts for about six percent of our general fund revenues. So, the, the general fees that we have for being able to go to the aquatic center or, you know, uh, get a, a season-long membership at Dwan, that isn't what that is counting. So that, that isn't that.
Community add.
Community add, it, it.
Where would, where would part?
The, the, the community, um, that, that I think is basically, uh, program income. I think that's like, program income, and that's about two point three million dollars. And so that's, that's not close to the eleven million that we get from, uh, the lodging taxes. So, so just to clarify for you. So, yep. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and before I, um, I've got a question for you, but before I kind of do that, I just want to thank, uh, Councilmember, uh, Rivas. Uh, you know, when I go and I knock on doors, uh, there, there are folks that, that share your opinion. And uh, I, I, I'm thankful and glad that you're here, uh, and sharing your opinions here, uh, at this dais. I think it's really important, uh, that you speak up. And, uh, and certainly there have been other councilmembers and other mayors who have shared your, your opinion throughout the years. And so I, I'm, I'm glad that you are using your voice to, to speak up, uh, before the Bloomington residents. Thank you. Uh, with that being said, Mayor, you know, as I look at this, this budget, uh, that we have for us, uh, today, uh, you know, I know it was last, uh, last year, I believe I did not support the budget because I was afraid, uh, that, uh, you know, we'd see this and what we're kind of seeing, seeing next year. Um, but that's the reality of the circumstance we find ourselves in. But when I look at this budget here, uh, tonight, uh, my understanding is, you know, the public safety and fire makes up roughly about sixty-five percent of, of that, of that budget. And then if we include, uh, the public works, that's, you know, nearly eighty-five percent. And then we can, you know, we can start ticking down, you know, through these things and what, what it looks like. And, and I guess as, as I look at this, this particular budget, you know, and I also look at, uh, in terms of what our mission statement is, because that's, you know, really kind of where we have to start, you know, Mayor, I look at this, is what is our, our mission? You know, a number of us kind of gathered in the community. And we looked at this thing and we said our, our mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And, you know, we have a number of strategic priorities, you know, both, uh, you know, a connected, welcoming community, healthy community. And then this third bullet here is a community with equitable economic growth. Now, back in twenty twenty, we were able to provide, uh, taxpayers, uh, a four point seven five percent levy. And the following year, uh, two point seven five, and the year after that, two point seven five, we, we recognized at that point in time, we, we tightened our belts. We cut things that we didn't want to cut. Uh, I know that there were members around this board that cut the DMV. And I was vehemently opposed to that. But we did it because we had, we had to kind of go ahead and make that happen and, and make that take, take place. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-three, we had a nine point one five, you know, and that was directly related to those years that were previous to that. We, you know, we had, had, we had provided a much more reduced levy. And so we're, we're paying for that now, and we're going to pay for that, uh, into the future. And so, you know, as, as I kind of look at this, you know, I just think it's just disingenuous, you know, for, for me to kind of just ignore, uh, Mayor, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, where we got those, those levies down as, 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 as far as possible. And so now we're going to, we're going to, we're going to pay a higher price, uh, for government because we did that. We heard that, that folks, they came to this audience and they said they were suffering and struggling. And this council, and the councils previous to it, cut those budgets down. And so, I know it's painful because I grew up in a single-parent family right here in Bloomington. And I've seen these budgets increase. And I know what it's like to try to get by on a low budget. And when I look at this, it's painful when I see a nine point one eight proposed budget. In fact, I want to see a little higher one because I want to see a little bit less next year. But people cannot afford that. It's going to be tough next year when we have to go in and, and cut it. But I got to tell you, um, I think that this staff has done everything that they can do to get this where it's at. And the thing is, we've had a number of years from a Capitol standpoint where, uh, past councils that I was a part of kicked the Capitol stuff down the road and, and didn't pay for it. And so now we're in this particular position that we find ourselves today, Mayor. And so I reluctantly, uh, don't want to support this, but you know what? I, I've got a duty to support this. And I'm, I'm going to do that tonight. And I'm, I'm going to support, uh, what we have as a, as a group have decided to do, even though I know what that, that means. But I know that that doesn't get any easier next year because that number is going to be even higher next year. And we know what's happening, Mayor, you talked about it, the federal government, uh, what's going to happen there. We don't know how that's going to impact us. You don't know what the economy is going to look like next year. But I do have faith that this, this council does represent what Bloomington as a whole sees. And we, you know, the mayor asked us many a times, are there things you wanted to cut? None of us could get to four to cut those items. So we've looked at those things. And I know next year, we're going to get that opportunity to look hard, uh, and make those cuts. We're going to be making lots of cuts if we want to get it down to where we are today. And I don't know it's going to be all that easy. But you know what? I'm going to take the responsibility. I support many of the things that are in this budget. There's some things I don't, but I'm going to support this. It's nine point one eight. That's what it is. I know it's going to be painful. And next year, let me tell you, it's going to be a lot more painful.
Listen to the people.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Other councilmembers?
Did we waste our time coming here tonight?
I think so.
Councilmember Carter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I do just want to make a comment that, um, we've been, so I want to say that I want to start by expressing my sincere gratitude to the city staff. Um, when I started on council in twenty twenty, we had very little community engagement when we were going through the budget process. And now, um, as you guys all, and we've all seen from the slides that we're sharing, um, our, our city staff and city council members were at many community events this summer, listening to residents, listening to them about what their priorities are and what's important to them. We've had hours and hours of city council discussion, um, you know, and so I understand and I hear the frustrations in the crowd. But I also want to say that we've heard from thousands of people across, since May, about their opinions related to this budget and the buzz, budget decisions that we have to make tonight. So, I just want to say respectfully, um, I really, really appreciate that each one of you came out here tonight and were willing to stand in that dais and share your opinions because it's not fun. Um, I've done it before, before I was on city council. Um, and I do take what you're saying to heart. Um, but I just ask that you respect us too because again, we have been listening to residents throughout the entire year. We had a big strategic planning process where we heard from residents. We have a coed department that actually helps facilitate community engagement all of the time. And so, I, I hear the, the rumblings and the shouts, but I just wanted to say that. Um, so I also, again, I want to acknowledge that this year's levy increase is substantial and I fully understand the strain that that might cause. I have young kids. My family's feeling the strain. My husband was laid off from his job last year. Thankfully, he has found work again. But you all, everybody listening tonight, not just those in the audience here, but those who are watching on TV, um, I just ask that you also remember that we're residents too. We're not like one percenters up here trying to get rich off of being on council in our eleven thousand dollar salaries or whatever. So, um, so again, I want to just emphasize, I really do, um, I do really do appreciate that this is a substantial increase. And I do not take it lightly. I also, I don't believe that city leadership or staff take it lightly. Um, we know a substantial amount of city staff actually live in Bloomington, so they're taxpayers too. Um, and so there are a few key points that I just want to highlight. Uh, first, um, we do continue to hear from our community that they want us to invest in vital city services, like police and fire, public works and parks. Uh, Councilmember Loman just mentioned a huge part of this levy increase goes to those departments. Um, and they are essential to maintaining the quality of life that Bloomington residents have come to expect and that they deserve. The challenge that we have up here is that every single one of the ninety thousand plus residents in Bloomington have different opinions about what's important. Some of you hate the DEI work, some of you don't. Some of you think that we should not have really nice parks, some of you want really nice parks. Um, some of you don't think we need a hybrid fire department, some of you understand that we do. Some of you don't want a community center, some of you do. Um, and so, it's our job to listen to the variety of opinions out there and then make the best, make the best decisions that we can. Um, and then like everyone else, we're facing rising costs from materials and supplies and equipment to wages. A large part of our budget are wages because we are a service sector, right? Whether it's plowing roads or maintaining parks, um, you know, our, our good wages are one of the reasons that we actually are one of the only cities with a fully staffed police department. It's just the facts. Um, and then finally, much of our infrastructure is aging and requires investment. Delaying this any further would only lead to greater costs down the road. And some may argue we are in this situation because past leaders kicked the can down the road. And so now we have water pipes that we have to replace. We have city park infrastructure that's crumbling. I mean, we don't have a full-time fire department or even a hybrid fire department at this point. And so these are things that, um, unfortunately have landed in front of us to address. Now, with all that said, I do agree that we have to look for efficiencies and we have to find cost savings wherever possible. Um, we have been having conversations around, um, you know, looking at our fund reserves. I'm excited to see the results from that and how that can help us. And I'm particularly hopeful around the priority-based budgeting process that we're looking at shifting to. And I'm really hoping that that will, you know, help us find a more sustainable path as we move forward. Because I do agree, it's not, it's not sustainable. We have to figure out how we're going to solve this problem. Um, and then lastly, I do just, you know, Councilmember Rivas, I do appreciate you making those comments. And I one hundred percent respect that you bring different ideas and different perspectives. And my only ask is that you share them. Because this is the first time that you have shared your ideas related to cuts. And we've been having these conversations since May. And again, I mean that respectfully. I, I would have loved to have had a robust conversation around coed and the trade-offs of having that department or not having that department. Um, but I didn't know that was something that you were thinking about. And so, um, so I encourage you to just like really own your seat on council, do whatever you need to do to feel, um, like you have all of the information necessary. Uh, but I really, I, I just really encourage you to share those opinions, um, because I, I would have loved to have had those conversations before this meeting. So thank you.
Councilmember Rivas?
Uh, I appreciate you. Thanks, uh, uh, Councilmember Carter. Um, the reluctance to open up and say what I said today is because in a couple of occasions, it was a very confrontational response that I got from fellow member of the council. So in order to avoid that, I refrain from saying that. I wrote a lot of notes today of what I wanted to say. But at the same time, I, I do believe that the city does have the need to, about, you know, to the budget. But I strongly believe that there are things that we could cut that, I wouldn't say totally unnecessary, but that don't actually accomplish what the city is supposed to do as a city. You just mentioned that provides services, right? Uh, to me, DEI, uh, community engagement, it's not a service that I need, right? So again, it's just my opinion, right? And the opinion of a lot of the people that I represent. Uh, so that said though, uh, the, the, the reality is, you know, when it comes to the fire department, the police, I'm a hundred percent with every one of you there. Uh, with the maintenance crew and, and department and the parks and recreation too. I, 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 one of the reasons I live here is because some of the parks are the best. I always boast about it with people that I talk to. Uh, but I do see the opportunity for us to cut maybe a couple of million dollars here and there because of things that I deem not absolutely necessary. But that said, uh, thank, thank you for, uh, encouraging me to talk. And I, I, believe me, you probably will have a hard time chatting me up in the future, but I hope not. I hope not. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I get frustrated, uh, when, so there are things that are opinions and then there are things that are just not true. And we have an obligation as a community to be truthful. And if my, uh, comments to Councilmember Rivas from time to time have frustrated him, I respect that and I apologize for that. I know I, uh, should not interrupt another council member. Uh, and I will do my best to do a better job of that in the future. Um, but, but saying things that, that are not accurate is very different than saying, stating your opinion. And one's opinion is completely legitimate here on court. That's what, what, that's what we're here for. Okay? I am too frustrated tonight that over the last seven months, there hasn't been an opinion articulated from Councilmember Rivas about his interest in cutting community educate, uh, community engagement. I would have loved to have heard that. That, that's a very valid thing to be looking at. We've looked at every single line item in this budget. And that, that each of those opportunities, there is an opportunity for every single one of us at this dais to say whether we like it or don't, whether we want it or don't, whether we have it at the number it's being proposed or not. Every single one of us. And I encourage every single one of us to use that. But at the end of seven months, to come out and say, I've got ideas, it, it's frustrating. It's frustrating for me because it's disrespectful to the work that we've done, in my opinion. And two, and by the way, in twenty twenty-two, at the end of twenty twenty-two, I too was at the very same position that Councilmember Rivas was, the, my first year on council, and I had to pass a nine point one five percent levy after years, years of two point seven five, three point oh, one point eight at one percent. Because the previous administration led by Gene Winstead was not willing to invest in the community as it was aging. That is just a fact. There is no, there's no, you, the data is the data. You cannot argue with that being true. So for me to sit up here and have someone who is now at the end of their first year on council, making excuse after excuse about how they don't know enough, how they can't, I, I won't, I won't. Because this is very, hey.
Folks, please, please, please.
This is, this is very important because this has festered and Mr., Councilmember Rivas and I have had a very, we have a good relationship. Do not worry about that. Okay? We sat down, we've sat down at National League of Cities in Tampa for hours and had a great lunch and everything else. Do not worry about this relationship. But I'm not the one that brought this up on council tonight. And I will respond because the person to whom he was speaking when he said what he did was me. And he was uninterrupted to do that. So, now I'll get back to the point of the levy. Okay? This, this levy, I have asked these questions time and time again. Seventy-eight percent of the number associated with this levy is just to keep doing what we are already doing. And I, throughout that entire engagement process, overwhelmingly, regardless of, again, the data, the in-person meetings, the Bloomington, uh, the, the Let's Talk Bloomington page, the, um, the community survey, the small business survey, the, the parks survey, that, like, pick, pick a thing where we've gone out and asked questions. The overwhelmingest response we've had is, let's keep doing this. In fact, even tonight, a wonderful gentleman came to our listening session and spoke about cutting. And then I said to him, you know, one of the things we could look at is Dwan Golf Course. Immediately, he said, no, don't touch it. That's what happens. Exactly to the Councilmember, uh, Carter's point. Everybody wants something here. And our job is to make sure we're doing the best job we can for the most people we can for the, the, the best dollar we can. And by the way, that is a very different mission statement and a very different vision than corporations who have one group of people that they're responsible to, and that's their stakeholders, their shareholders. I am a corporate executive. I am a corporate executive. I know what I'm talking about when it comes to being in the business, and I've done that job. So to do this job and do that job is very, two very different lenses through. So to do this job and do that job is very, two very different lenses through which you have to look at the world. The last thing that I will say is, I am you. I live in a house and my taxes are going up. I'm also like looking for a new job. I have been impacted by the same economy that everybody else in this room has been. I feel your pain. I definitely feel your pain. We could sit down and have that conversation. I would love to go levy to levy with you guys, to go assessment to assessment with you folks. There are hundreds of people in this community with whom I've already done that. So at the end of the day, we have to decide whether or not we are going to continue to operate with the, the way that the city is going. And until I hear a majority of people, a majority of people tell us that we're not doing things right, I'm really reticent not to continue to support what we're trying to do here. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Not that it's a competition, but my first budget cycle, I got sworn in in November and had to approve a budget and had to look at a budget after that because I was in a special election. That was the least fun budget cycle I had. This is probably the second least fun one that I've had. Last year I voted against the levy because I felt that, um, we as a city, I put responsibility on my shoulders as well, had not done enough to take the concerns that we're hearing from folks tonight, that we heard from them, uh, last year about the impacts that these are having. And what I keep in mind is, you know, the, the woman that I brought forth, her comments at a listening session recently and, you know, fixed income, single woman, you know, between this and Hennepin County and health insurance and, and homeowner's insurance and stuff like that. Her increase in, um, her social security was not only wiped out, but probably plus some there. And, and I, I, it absolutely, absolutely breaks my heart to hear those stories. And, and I believe it does all of my colleagues. I believe they hear all of those stories. We talk to those people. And what we're working through and what we've been working through for six months plus is how we balance the requests that we're getting from residents, similar to yourselves, that want more amenities, that want public services, that, that want us to address issues in our community. And they're asking for these things and respectfully looking at, can we afford all of that? And that's what I've, I've hoped to bring to the discussion in this last year. And what I felt was lacking last year was that we hadn't had some of those conversations. And I'm certainly not going to say we had them to the full extent or they didn't go the entire direction that I would have hoped. Many were here earlier today, you know, when I voted against another budget. There are other things that I think still need to be addressed. But what I have seen and I very much appreciate from city staff and from my colleagues is that we're working on that challenge. It's extraordinarily difficult. But what we've done this year is we've had earlier engagement throughout the process. I think there's more we can do because there's a question that came out of the crowd about, hey, is there any reason to be here? And I'm going to be blunt with you, it's tough. We have a legal obligation to pass a budget, you know? And we could maybe make some modifications to it. I would love to see you involved in this discussion earlier in the process. And with that said, Carter's done an excellent job of reaching out to the community and doing that and engaging people in that conversation earlier. I just think we should be more formal about it in the process. I think that's been brought up by my colleagues previously. But we've also seen, as an example, the planning commission had something on its work plan that it worked on this year for efficiency. We talk about doing more with less. Our planning commission explicitly set out to do that this year and refined a significant number of their processes in order to more efficiently serve our business community at a lower cost for our entire community. I had a question from someone who spoke tonight earlier. It was in a private conversation, but with regards to vehicles. I mean, we had a, a program a couple of years ago where we went through what, what city staff determined was a shadow fleet of vehicles. And we got rid of those vehicles and we updated them. And, you know, we reduced the number of cars that we don't need that are just sitting around. That saves the community money as we go on. If you're hearing some of our other conversations, you should see what we, we have a grant staff person. I, I believe the number was 13 million that they brought in to this city to help fund things through this community. And that has gone up since 2019 when I think it was about $5 million, something I've been pushing. Like, okay, if our community is going to ask for more stuff, let's be more efficient about the delivery of it. Let's figure out other ways to pay for it, you know? Honestly, we get feedback from others about things like fees. I know there are some sports organizations that aren't super thrilled about the fact that they're paying fees for fields, you know? But we have shifted the policy that we're going to try to collect more fees and not put that on the back of property taxpayers to subsidize. We can talk about the art center right out here about that. My mind, it's a field. It's a recreation, it's amenity, it's an opportunity for kids to get engaged and learn and make friends and expand their horizons. Just like playing football or playing softball or playing lacrosse or whatever sport you do. All of those things. And so we're, we're looking at ways to do better cost recovery. Community Health and Wellness Center, we have a very clear goal of recovering all of the money from that. There's a reason why I brought up the $500,000 subsidy to the water park, the current one. You know, we haven't had that philosophy in the past and we spend nearly $50,000 per week to have that facility open for people. The community supports it, the community likes it. So we support it and we have it in that budget. But that's $500,000 that's in our budget to do that. And we're, I wish we had got to it this year. But staff has started a project with regards to our working capital, which I think is an opportunity. I don't know what the results of that are going to come out to be. But we're looking at, you know, are we capturing the right amount of working capital? Should we capture less, which will impact, have a lower tax levy for all of us? Potentially if there's too much in those, potentially a refund. Don't make any promises there. I don't know what that study is going to come back with, but staff has a really good plan to do that study next year. And I appreciate that. And that's not the only study that they're doing next year in terms of how we become more and more efficient. And I think it's been said, we gotta, I mean, this is not good, this levy. Next year's worse. We have to figure out a solution to that for everybody. And, and I think that's going to be a combination of all sorts of things. And I think as much as we want to say yes to amenities, yes to the services, we have to at least be willing to say no to some of that in order to say yes to those who are hurting on the tax basis. So I will support this budget. I don't like this budget. I've made my questions, concerns very clear over the last couple of months. But at the end of the day, I'd just like to thank our staff for the work that they have done and for listening to the concerns that have been raised that this is really difficult for people. And, and we, we're, they're taking that seriously, they're working on things. And I want to put some concrete things in front of you that they're working on to make this more palatable for you. Because it, it could be, it could be much, much worse and if we didn't have such an amazing staff that is really taking it seriously. So thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I've said this the whole time we've had these budget conversations and it's the fact that these are the most important conversations that we have every year. And they are the most difficult conversations that we have every year. Every single comment, question, concern that we've heard here tonight, we've literally talked about and asked during the last seven months. In addition to the hundreds of other questions that came to us from other residents. And I've had dozens of coffee chats with people, sat down at coffee just to see what's going on with you and what can I do. I've had hundreds of phone calls. We've got 1,000 emails that we've gone back talking about this very thing. And that's the challenge. We've heard a lot from people who aren't happy with the 9.18%. I think a lot of us have expressed that that is something that is very difficult. And we've asked our staff to bring it down. But we've also haven't heard from people who want to see an investment in Bloomington. I've only lived in Bloomington for nine years now, since 2015. And from what I can see, and to quote Wayne Gretzky, he always says, "I skate to where the puck is going to be, not where it was." And for the past 30 years, we have continued to skate to where the puck was, not where it's going to be. And for 30 years, and Bloomington is great and I love Bloomington. And when we build things, we build things really well and they last for 40, 50, 60 years. And guess what? We're at 50, 60 years right now and that means we have to invest in it. That means that we have to balance not only making sure that seniors who are on fixed income can continue to live in their homes. My wife's grandmother, 93, finally just had to move out of her home because she needed more help. But she was, on my mind, every single day is I'm thinking, how can I ensure that grandma can stay in her house? But then I look at the families that I'm around now. I have three kids, six, four and two. And their families coming to me saying, when are you going to do this? When are you going to do that? We're moving down to Lakeville. We're moving to Farmington because you just don't have it now and we can't afford to wait for you to do this. So we're stuck in a hard, a rock and a hard place. How can we balance to ensure that people can continue to live here in Bloomington? But how can we make sure that people can come to Bloomington? It's true, Bloomington continues to age. But if we don't have families coming in to support that, what's going to happen? The burden is going to fall on seniors. And that's the last thing I want to do is to continue to put pressure on seniors and not be able to attract younger families into Bloomington to help balance that out. Because our future in Bloomington depends on young families who come to Bloomington because we have made a conscious decision to not only ensure affordability here in Bloomington, but to continue to invest in things that they have told us are important. That police, fire, public works, parks and rec, all of those things are vital to the things that families look for when they come to Bloomington. And every decision or indecision that we make up here has a consequence. You're seeing that work out right here, right now. A city of this size who came to peak size in the 70s and 80s should have 100% had a full-time fire department back in the 80s, back in the 90s. But we're not. And if you look at Bloomington, we are essentially an island. We can't depend on our neighbors to get to us like we do, like Eagan does or Apple Valley. Because everywhere you go to get out of Bloomington, you have to cross a bridge. And so we depend on ourselves. And our fire department needs to be up to snuff to support residents who need their help. And it is not easy and I want, and I, I'm, I'm glad we have the staff we do. Because if we didn't, I think we'd be looking at significantly higher levy rate. But I think as everyone has said, next year is going to be our, our big challenge. And it's not going to be just next year. Next year's our focus. But this is something that's going to be continued for the next four or five years because we have to continue to invest in our fire department and that's going to continue to drive a significant portion of our levy. And so this isn't a conversation that ends here today. And that's a guarantee that I'll make to everyone here is our budget conversations don't just stop today. We'll continue to have these conversations as the new year comes because we know how vitally important it is to ensure that people can live here, but also to ensure that people want to be here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, council, for your input and, and your discussions on this and your work on this over the past six months. Thanks to our staff for the, the work that they've put into this because I know it's no small task and it comes around every year. It's the darnedest thing. You have to do it every year and you do a great job. So thank you. And thanks to all the residents who we've heard from tonight and as council members who have said, who we have heard from for the past several months about this. And we have heard, we, we heard you tonight, but we've heard people throughout the summer and into the fall. As Councilmember Carter said, everybody wants something. Councilmember Alessandro brought it up. I mean, we talk about, we talk about making cuts, but not Duane. We, we made a significant cut at the height of the pandemic and we closed the DMV. But not the DMV, you can't close the DMV. We, we have, we, we have to balance the wants and the needs of this community. And I firmly believe that this, uh, this budget, this levy, this, this work that we've done reflects the values, the priorities, what, what this community is asking us, all of us, to do. And I have said before, I mean, and it has, was said earlier here, city governments, we're in the service industry. We, we don't make widgets, we provide services. And with that comes a, a lot of challenges. It's not like you can cut the cost of production or, or buy cheaper inputs from another, you know, another country. We have, it's the people who deliver the services is what we're all paying for in this budget, in and every budget. And when we talk about those services, uh, and this was intimated earlier as well. So police, fire, public works, community development, that's the business community, and park and recreation, that makes up about 83% of our budget. Those are the nuts and bolts work of city government. Are, is there nipping we could do around the edges for programs people might not agree with? Or an arts, uh, program that, by the way, contributes about a $16 million input to the local economy every year? All those things, I mean, we could talk about those. But those five things that I mentioned, police, fire, public works, community development, public works are the lion's share of this budget and every budget. Because that's what cities do. And to do the things that those folks do, it takes people. And people cost. And because you need somebody to drive that fire truck. You need somebody to drive the snowplow, to be behind the counter when you need a license. Those are the folks that this budget is paying for. And Bloomington residents have made it clear for decades that they insist on the highest quality of those people. And that, that's how it should be. I mean, we can agree on that. If we disagree with that, let us know. If you don't want us to plow or only plow when it hits six inches, let us know. Because that changes the, that changes everything. But to meet the requirements and the demands and the values and the priorities that we hear from the community requires us to do these things that we are doing right now. To pay those outstate, excuse me, to pay those outstanding employees who are doing outstanding work every year. About 75% of our budget goes to personnel costs. So three quarters of the budget goes to pay the people that do the work. Again, it's not, it's, 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 you can come up with superfluous programs in your mind or talk about all this, but three quarters of the money that are, is in the general fund goes to pay the people that actually do the work. And you won't be surprised to hear that the public sector is a very competitive sector right now. So the wages that we pay to keep the people around, make sure that they don't go to Plymouth or Lakeville or Farmington or anywhere else. Because that's what we're, that's what we've heard from residents. They expect this to be the place that provides outstanding services. And, and I think we do that. And, you know, on the topic of the services that this community has come to expect, police and fire make up a lion's share of this budget increase. I mean, not just the budget itself, but the budget increase. Because we have heard constantly that public safety is the number one, the number one priority of this community. And we have one of the best, if not the best, police department in the state of Minnesota that takes people, that takes training, that takes equipment, that costs money. We're building a hybrid fire department. Folks, you don't want to know how many times fire trucks would roll with one firefighter on them. Before, when we had the full volunteer or paid-on call, one firefighter on trucks. In a city of 91,000, that is completely unacceptable and that is a tragedy waiting to happen. And so we've taken the action to correct that. We're, we're going to a full-time fire department and we're building the firehouses that can, that can house those people, those full-time firefighters. That is a community requirement of us. We were told that and that, that's the, that's what we're, we're working toward. And again, regardless of the budget itself, this budget increase, 55, 60% police and fire in this budget increase? 65% of this budget increase specifically to public safety, police and fire. So I mean, if, if you come at us and say, we got a cut, I guarantee some of those cuts would have to be out of police and fire. I guarantee it. And yes, and, and last year too, because you know what? We're working from a deficit, a significant deficit in terms of our fire department. And we're trying to catch up and make sure that we provide the safety that people insist on. The budget is designed to reflect the values and the priorities of this community. It really is. And it's what we've heard from people. We heard tonight that we need to take a close look. And we will absolutely do that. I will say, message received. The 18% that we're talking about next year, I mean, that, we only know that number because we're, the, the city is smart enough to do a two-year budget, a rolling two-year budget. So we know what we do this year, how it impacts us next year. There are cities that don't do that. They just look year to year. Think about Minneapolis. They work year to year. We do a two-year budget rolling to, to see what the work that we do this year, how it impacts next year. And that 18% is not the proposal right now. That is the starting point. That is the number that staff has thrown out based on what we're looking at this year. And I can guarantee you, it's not going to be 18%. I can guarantee you that. And especially based on the conversations we've had tonight, based on the realities that are, are coming from Washington, the realities that we're going to see at the state level and the, what we're going to hear. and the, what we're going to hear from all of you and continue to hear from you. We will work with that, and we will work toward a budget that, next year, that budget will reflect the values in the community, the values and the priorities of this community as well. Now, if the values of this community are, are, you know, stop improving the parks, or don't have a full-time fire department, if we hear that from a vast majority of people, that's the values of this community. We haven't heard that yet. We have heard from people, they want outstanding parks, they want outstanding public safety. They want the streets plowed when there's a two or three-inch snowfall. We've heard that, and that's the work that the city does. So, uh, I appreciate everyone's input tonight. I really sincerely do. And as everyone up here has said, we are all residents as well. We're all property taxpayers as well. We're feeling it as well. The staff that we have gets the work done that we were asked to get done. And if you think you can just turn somebody on, turn on a department and let them run, you, you, you need to look at what a large organization looks like. So. So I appreciate your input. I really do. Uh, Council, I appreciate your input. I agree, we have significant work to do in the next twelve months. By this time next year, we have significant work to do. And, uh, it's going to be a challenge. As we go through a, a leadership transition, as we go, as we, we look at all the, the externals that we can't control, it's going to be a challenge, but we have to be up to that challenge to put together a budget that reflects the values and the priorities of this community. Council, anything additional to add? Or do we want to, do we want to continue this conversation? Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I think it's time that we, uh, get this, uh, motion out here and, uh, sure that if there's any more comments on it, but I, I'm going to go ahead and move to adopt a resolution establishing the final tax levy for the city of Bloomington for the year of twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Dallessandro to adopt the resolution establishing final tax levies for the city of Bloomington for the year twenty twenty-five. Any further council discussion on this?
I'll just say this, Mayor. Thank you, uh, for your leadership, and thank you for your comments, and also my fellow colleagues, and I appreciate your, your comments. Uh, this is an important issue.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. And sorry, I have been thinking this, and I just really wanted to say it before we closed this agenda item. Um, we have such amazing staff that they are willing to sit down with anybody and go through the budget. And they've done it. I know they've done it with people who are in the room tonight, um, line by line, and they can tell you, okay, so if we, so this is how much this costs, that equals point-two percent of a levy. The percentage, like of an increase, right? Like, I remember one time I asked them a question, like, if we cut this certain thing, which, I mean, it was like several people, what would that do to the levy? And they were like, it's like a point-three percent. I mean, it was very, very small, right? Um, and so I, I just encourage you, if you are somebody in the community and you really want to better understand, or at least kind of better understand, because it is very complex, the city budget, our staff are always willing to, to meet with people and go through those.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we have a motion by Councilmember Loman, a second by Councilmember Dallessandro to adopt the resolution establishing final tax levies for the city for Bloomington for the year twenty twenty-five. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt a resolution, adopting the final twenty twenty-five general fund budget.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Dallessandro to adopt a resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-five general fund budget. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, one, with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Thank you so very much, Council. Again, thanks to the staff for your work. Thank you all for your conversation as well. Greatly appreciated. Council, we are at nine twenty-three. I want to say that to both the Council and the staff because we have a few things to get through yet this evening. Um, brevity and alacrity might be the two words that we want to talk about right now. Item four point three on our agenda is the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four capital improvement plan approval. Good evening, Governor. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, Council and, um, Mayor. On the CIP for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four, uh, this item has been before the Council. I'll move through. Uh, the, the capital improvement program document is based off of our city mission, uh, to be a connecting and welcoming community, community, uh, a healthy community and a community with economic growth in it. So all the pieces, and there's about a hundred projects within this document that meet all of the mission of the city. This evening, we'll go through a little on the purpose and timelines, some updates, and hold the public hearing. The purpose and timeline. Let's see, I think it skipped, no. Here we go. You've seen this slide, um, annually, a couple times a year. So the capital improvement plan is a planning tool. By having a project in here, it does not guarantee that the project will be committed, completed, um, at all until it comes before the city council if it's over a certain dollar amount. Um, so this is a long-term planning document. The projects that are in here with a detailed description. We have five different categories, like transportation, so we have a, a seven-digit code. So the first two is the type of project. The next two is the year in which the project came in there, and the last three digits are the sequential of that year's number of projects. So, there's a number of projects in there that have been in there for many years. We do have an executive summary at the beginning of the document that lists projects over, on, on a million dollars. And, sorry. I swallowed wrong. No, I'm fine. Uh, I'll just keep moving through. Um, again, there's no guarantee the projects, yeah, just tough. We'll keep moving through these projects and, um, but there's no guarantee that the projects will be done unless all the sources and uses for the project are before the council before moved through, and will follow the normal procurement rules of, um, where the state statutes are at, at, um, approval level. So the city council, um, viewed the draft document in October. The planning commission met in November and went through the document to make sure all of the items within there meet the comprehensive plan. Thank you, Chief. And then the items before the council tonight for a public hearing. On the updates, we've had a number of updates, um, in the document since October. Uh, with the approval of, um, the regional park piece, we've moved all of the Bush Lake Beach, or Bush Lake, um, items out of the CIP. We also adjusted all of the park development items, and we moved those two years out. And then on the Dwan, Dwan Golf Course, that was scheduled for twenty twenty-six, is now scheduled for twenty twenty-eight. Um, animal shelter, it, the process is underway. It was in the, the CIP for twenty twenty-five at a million seven. We've moved that to twenty twenty-eight at five million. Again, these numbers will change. It's just a placeholder. So as we know more on the project, we will update the CIP for next year. Uh, the Community Health and Wellness Center parking ramp, we moved from twenty million down to ten million. And then we've added the North Central Sanitary Sewer Divisions. And just to give you a picture of, um, where all the projects lie in the five categories, surface transportation is at two hundred and fifty million, and again, um, just over on the other side is the city facilities, two hundred and eighty-five million. Of that, two hundred and eighty-five million, a hundred and twenty million of that, um, is the Community Health Wellness Center and the nine-mile developments there. So you see park developments, sewer and water. The South Loop, um, piece will increase as we're looking more at the South Loop and Port Authority. Um, next year, we'll probably have an HRA area two, where they're listing some of their project improvements for their, um, capital projects. So we're working with HRA and Port to develop that area a little bit more so that we're reflecting pieces there. And as the council, um, has seen in this slide in the past, as, um, we approve this document, it's giving us a green light to start um, looking at pieces of this, engaging consultants or preparing studies. Sometimes we're doing a lot more engagement before we even do the bid package. So these are just categories that we will work through as we bring it to council and move it forward. And that's a quick presentation, so if there's, if there's questions, I'm here. Otherwise?
Thank you very much. Uh, Council, we've, we've gone through this a number of times, and, and I think we, if you have any additional questions, love to hear them now. Otherwise, we'll get to, uh, the, the public hearing on this, but questions specific to the presentation, Councilmember?
I, I do. Is there a, do you happen to have, thank you, Mr. Mayor, do you happen to have the actual list again? I know, I know we had it in a previous slide. I just wanted to put it up one more time. Not, not the, the roll-up, but the, the, the specific twenty-five, twenty-six, the actual list of the items that are in there. I was looking online for it, but I don't think that we've published it yet online for this, right? So I wondered where I could find it very quickly. I'm just trying to jog my memory. That's all.
Mayor and Council, I don't have the draft presentation open. If the internet's open, I can, um,
It was, was it the October fourteenth meeting? I can look in the minutes if that's the case.
Are we looking, are we looking for the whole document, or are we looking just for the presentation?
I, I was just looking for the list of the things that are coming up in twenty-five and twenty-six. So if that's in the, if I have to look at the whole document to get that, that's fine.
Mayor and Council, are we looking for the debt items, or, I mean?
Literally the list of projects that is in the CIP. Aren't, we are passing the CIP. I would just like to see the actual CIP. That's what I'm looking for.
Councilmember, we, we, yeah, we did review it in October, and I think we would have to reopen that.
That, that's fine. Is it the fourteenth? Is, do we know, do you remember the date of the meeting? I'm sorry, if we could use ChatGPT to get to our meeting notes quickly, I would be happy to do that. I know how to do that at home. I do not know how to do that on my tablet. I apologize.
I, I honestly don't.
Okay, it's, it's not relevant to the, go ahead and do the public hearing. I'll try to keep snooping. Thank you.
Uh, we've got a couple of people looking for you right now, so.
Uh, it would have been on October twenty-eighth.
There you go. Council, additional questions? If not, thank you. Don't go far. This is a public hearing, item four point three, and I will open this public hearing now. This is regarding the twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four capital improvement plan approval. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point three this evening as part of the public hearing? Elizabeth, do we have anyone on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, there is no one online.
Last call for anybody in the chambers for item four point three. Council, no one on the phone, knowing coming forward in the council chambers, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mu, a second by Councilmember Loman to close the public hearing on item four point three. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Verbrugge?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Dallessandro, the agenda item, did, you, you found the document? Because there's a hyperlink right from the agenda. Okay, like, for, for other council members, right in the agenda item for four point three, there's a hyperlink that goes right to the document. Page two seventy-five, yeah.
Thank you. All right. Council, any comments? Uh, Councilmember Dallessandro, any additional comments or questions on the CIP for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four? Councilmember Loman?
I'd just say briefly, I just appreciate, you know, the year in and year out, the improvements that are made with the CIP document, the process. We've come a long ways, uh, in the years that I've, uh, been here and, and seen that. Um, it's, it's pretty clear. And it's becoming more and more important, uh, you know, you know, next year will be another year where we'll get to see, uh, the importance of the magnitude of the capital budget, and also the planning and the process that we need to do around that. So again, thanks staff for their, their hard work on this process.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I actually think this is a very good example of what we talked about in the budget of the community asking for things and, um, looking for amenities and looking for us to make investments. And we need to be mindful of the budget challenges that all of these will bring forth, and how we contain scope and cost on them, as well as look at timing on them. We know that our debt is going to be a big part of our, um, budget going forward. So, uh, just this is a great example of the, the issue we're dealing with.
Exactly, exactly. Councilmember Dallessandro?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanted to look at this for exactly that reason, Councilmember Nelson. So in twenty twenty-five, we have the Health and Wellness Center, we have the equipment, the new maintenance garage. We have the phase one PW refit, which I think is the public works refit. Is that right? Do I, PW is public works?
Yep.
Um, and we have the Civic Plaza restroom stuff. So the question that, and I know we already talked about the fact that the twenty-seven million dollars for the maintenance garage was going to be the big hit going into the next year. I, I would, I, I think just as a part of the discussions we want to have, making sure we have a clear understanding of what not doing that would mean to like services itself, right? So we can make that call. I know it's going to come before us, so let's just make sure it includes all the, the, what if we don't do it? What does that mean? And, and if, and if we're going to do the phase one public works refit, which I think is about the building, the public work building, um, I'm, I want to know if that's like, going to include the, I'm assuming that includes the solar, uh, the curing of the roof for solar and stuff like that. So we just want to be really explicit about what those things actually include, so hopefully we'll get to that. There may be options here in, in, with the restroom and the carpet, and we have to talk through that, but that's not, is not a huge part of the budget. So that's, that was really the reason I wanted to look at it, is to make sure we had an understanding of, of everything that's coming up, especially in the next two years.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Others? If not, Council, I would look for action on item four point three this evening.
Yeah, I'm happy to make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Dallessandro?
Thank you. And, and by the way, I do want to say thank you. You guys have been proactive about pushing those items out already for us, so we, you've already taken our feedback about the fact that we didn't want those things to hit next year and the year after, so, um, appreciate that very much. Uh, I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the city's capital improvement plan twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty, sorry, twenty thirty-four, and providing preliminary approval to the issuance of general obligation bonds thereunder.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dallessandro, second by Councilmember Mu to adopt the resolution approving the city's capital improvement plan for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-four. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. And our final public hearing of the evening is item four point four. This is regarding an ordinance on our energy benchmarking program. Ms. Strass is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, I'm here with a recommendation to update chapter one and ten of the city code to essentially remove the city's benchmarking program in twenty twenty-four to make way for the state taking over the program in twenty twenty-five. I'll start, for those who are listening, with a brief overview of what is large building benchmarking related to our energy disclosure ordinance. Discuss the new state program, recap the presentation that staff provided in June, provide updates about what we have learned since June, requiring those new state requirements, and then provide the staff recommendation, proposed motions, and then discussion. So our large building benchmarking program has been going on for three years. The program requires all buildings that are, are multifamily, public, or commercial to disclose their energy use if they're seventy-five thousand square feet and above, to, um, have the purpose of having building property owners and managers better understand the performance of their building, and to encourage peer comparison of energy use, and then also equipping the city to be a resource to help improve energy efficiency in the community. In twenty twenty-three, um, at the state legislative session during that, lawmakers, lawmakers passed, um, a new law, essentially, um, having what our current benchmarking program is for the city, go statewide for the following counties that are listed and cities, so we would fall under that. Um, the building sizes include class one, a hundred thousand square feet and above, that would benchmark next year, and then class two, fifty thousand square feet and above. So one of the things that, uh, we knew when this passed was that cities who currently have benchmarking programs could keep their, um, programs as long as they met the state's requirements. So the initial staff recommendation based upon what we knew in June was to keep the program as is for one more year, um, and then to rescind our benchmarking ordinance in twenty twenty-six and pass it on to the state. The reason being that there would be a gap year for about forty properties that currently benchmark that are between that seventy-five thousand square feet and a hundred thousand square feet. So we thought it would be an easier transition for participants keeping up habits, um, our full data access, and aligned at the time with what we thought our peer cities would be doing. So in June is when staff came before you. Unfortunately, it did take five months to get clarity on some of our questions from the state, which we received last month. And that information really updated what staff's recommendation, um, is. And then I do want to note also that our current contract, because we contract out to do most of the work for this program, with Touchstone IQ ends at the end of this year, and that our program cycle for next year starts March 1st, that we start doing outreach and communication sometimes starts earlier with reporting due June 1st. So we have a narrow timeline to work with. So what do we learn with the state updates? So one requirement was that we needed to be at least as comprehensive in scope. So we knew that the size, square foot difference would, um, be different than what's in our ordinance, but since we were planning to end the program at the end of 2025, that wouldn't be an issue. One thing that was included in the state's, um, program that wasn't included ours, that was determined as a requirement that we would need to update, is requiring benchmarking information at the time of sale. That means any one of these commercial properties that sold, the city would have to develop a process for ensuring that either the Energy Star Portfolio Manager login, the tool that they use to benchmark, that information is transferred to, um, the buyer or 12 months of data. So that would be a new process that we would have to manage as staff to ensure that any time a property is sold, that we would be getting that information to the buyer. There also is the requirement for a new disclosure rating system that the city would need to be sending out a physical display in a star rating system, which is different than what we've used in the past, to be able to disclose to anyone what the rating of that facility is. This would also require for one year, us setting up a new program and system and putting together these tools, um, to have. And then the second thing listed is to include annual enforcement of a penalty. We thought we had this one covered. Um, in the first three years of the program, we've reached, um, 85% compliance and we've seen that grow each year without enforcing fines. It's an option, but we've really focused on education in the early years of the program. What we learned from the state is that we must enforce those fines. So if we were keeping the program for one more year, staff would have to set up a system to actually go out and enforce fines and do all of that paperwork. So that's something that currently would not be something that we've done to date. So given this new information, um, updating the energy benchmarking ordinance to keep the city program. The pros, you would have about 40 buildings not have a gap year, potentially an easier transition for participants. The cons, definitely, um, the staff perspective outweigh this. The timing, since we learned about this at the end of this year, getting, um, a new contract ready to go, um, for 2025, and also preparing that new disclosure, um, requirements and, um, on the properties and also the time of sale, um, disclosure of that Energy Star Portfolio Manager information or the 12 months of data, and then also making sure that we have a process for, um, enforcing those fines gives us a tight window. Resources, we've talked about resources a lot tonight. Just don't think that it's efficient use to build up a program for one year that we see ending. If we can invest that staff time in other ways to reach our climate goals. And then also staff capacity, just noting that the city's benchmarking official has planned parental leave, um, during that time. So having, um, a new program with limited staff capacity over those months where enforcement would begin, um, would be an extra hurdle. So rescinding that ordinance, the pros, one thing we learned from the state is that all buildings and their contracts, even if you're not required to benchmark, can optionally do this. So all the technical assistance that's been available to buildings will continue. And so those properties, those 40 properties can still benchmark and receive that information. And they also, um, have signed a contract with Touchstone IQ. So we have the same contractor that, and help desk that people are familiar working with. So we see that as an easier transition. It's also a pro, allowing the limited staff capacity and financial capacity to be invested in the other climate initiatives. Cons, we anticipate if it's not a requirement, that we won't get a full set of data for those approximately 40 buildings. But definitely seeing the pros of ending the program to get ready to pass it on to the state over the cons of that gap in data and benchmarking for one year. So the final recommendation is to rescind our current ordinance and have the state take over the program in 2025. And the proposed motions are as follows. And open for questions and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you much, and, and I appreciate the analysis and breaking it down as you did. It's a good way to look at it, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Council, questions on this? Very good. Don't go far. This is a public hearing, and I'm gonna open the public hearing now. So this is a public hearing, item 4.4, our energy benchmarking ordinance. Anyone in the chambers wishing to speak to item 4.4 this evening? Anything, Elizabeth?
Nobody online, Mr. Mayor.
Last call for anybody in the chambers? Council, no one online, no one coming forward in the chambers here. I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.4. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Lohman to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further council discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero, closing the public hearing. Anything on this, Council? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, very quickly. Uh, one, I, I do appreciate that staff brought for a recommendation to stop doing something. Um, that is a positive in my mind when it made sense. But in particular, what I really liked about your presentation is you had the pros and cons. And I'll be candid, a lot of time when we ask questions about any particular program, we're told why it's important. We're not told why it's not, you know, or why it might not be. And, and so I appreciate that you gave both sides for consideration in this. And, um, everything you presented makes absolute sense and, uh, it sounds like the state will take this over. And, uh, there will still be benchmarking data for buildings and that will continue to help our sustainability goals. So, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, would you like to move this item for us?
No, thanks.
I would, Mayor. I'll just go.
Councilmember Muah.
I would. Move to adopt an ordinance amending chapters one and 10 of the city code by rescinding energy benchmarking enforcement and violation procedures.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to adopt the ordinance rescinding energy benchmarking and enforcement via, and violation procedures in the city code. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Muah, summary publication.
Thank you. I move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of ordinance thereby rescinding energy benchmarking and enforcement and violation procedures.
Motion by the Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember DeLisandro for summary publication on item 4.4. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item five, our organizational business, and item 5.1 is a discussion of our 2025 legislative platform. And Brianna Eichel-Dinger, Special Projects Coordinator, is here to kick us off. Good evening, welcome.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Assistant City Manager Elizabeth Tolzmann and I are here to present the proposed 2025 legislative platform for the city of Bloomington. So just a quick look at our agenda. We're going to have an overview of what staff has been up to this summer and fall as we've prepared for the 2025 session. Uh, we'll hear from our state and federal lobbyists as they share their insights and updates. And then we'll review the draft platform included in tonight's agenda packet, which includes a list of priorities that we're ready to lead on at the Capitol and the list of priorities we're looking to directly support. And then finally, we'll consider the three projects that staff is proposing for capital budget request applications. We'll end with a discussion and ask for your direction moving forward. So when staff began the conversation around the 2025 platform this summer, our aim was to ground the discussion in the priorities of the strategic plan, Bloomington tomorrow together. So you'll see the items in the draft platform align with our key strategic priorities of a connected and welcoming community, a healthy community, and a community with equitable economic growth. So here's a timeline as we were preparing to get ready for 2025. Our internal staff teams met. Um, in August, we held a legislative session debrief and meet and greet with our state and federal lobbyists to give staff more access to those resources. And we also met with our, excuse me, in August, we had a legislative priority workshop. And we created a working matrix that staff could start discussion around, see where our support would be helpful at the legislature and where we would like to lead on some items. Uh, in October, we hosted a meeting with our Bloomington delegation that included Senator Wickland, Representative Elkins, and Representative Coulter. Unfortunately, Senator Mann was unable to join us today, but we had a really great conversation. And then you'll see throughout November or October and November, the LAT team continued refining the draft document that's before you tonight. And so before we jump into that, we wanted to invite our lobbyists. I'm first going to introduce Emily Trantner. She's our lead lobbyist with Primacy Strategy Group, and she represents Bloomington at the federal level based out of Washington DC. And after that, we'll invite Katie Sen to come forward. She's here with us tonight. She's principal with Messerly Kramer, and she represents Bloomington at the state level, and she'll also share some insights with us. So I will invite Emily to join the conversation.
Good evening, Ms. Trantner. How are you?
I'm great. Can you hear me?
We can. Very good to see you.
Very good to see you as well. Well, happy almost 2025. It's wonderful to be with all of you tonight. I'll keep my comments brief and just kinda give you a brief overview of where we're at right now in Congress and what to expect kind of coming down the immediate pike. So we are right now in lame duck session after the November 2024 elections. Congress, uh, still has a few weeks to get their work done before the new Congress is convened in January 2025. So, um, typically that's can be a very active session. However, this year, because of the Republican trifecta in the House, Senate, and the White House, there's not as much of an appetite or not as much, um, need to pass things because there, a new Congress will be coming in and new priorities can be set out and moved forward then. But the one major thing that we need to, uh, pass before the end of the year, um, with, with some other, uh, exceptions, but is the federal budget, uh, or a continuing resolution, which is what is likely to happen or most likely to happen. So we are, uh, operating under a continuing resolution right now that expires this Friday, December 20th at midnight. And between now and then, we need to, Congress needs to, uh, draft, release, and pass another continuing resolution that will, for all reports, intends to get us through March of 2025 so that the new Congress can come in and figure out priorities and top line spending items and pass a full or almost full budget through the end of fiscal year 2025 that ends in September. We are anxiously awaiting the, uh, the release of the current continuing resolution that will take us through that March date so that we don't have a government shutdown on Friday. We expect that to come out. Um, however, we were expecting it to come out earlier today and over the weekend. So kind of hour by hour, um, we're likely to see, uh, draft bill. And again, that will be just the budget that, that prevents a government shutdown and gets us through March 2025. Uh, there are a couple of things that they are working out, uh, jockeying, if you will, behind the scenes to try to get some policy provisions tied on because they're also using, Congress is also using this continuing resolution as the vehicle to pass a year-long extension to the farm bill. So that's basically just riding along on that. Um, and so there's lots of jockeying and, and discussions about different provisions in there. So once that bill is passed, which likely, even though it'll probably come down to the wire, will happen this week, uh, the 118th Congress will effectively end and we will, uh, begin the 119th Congress on January 3rd when new members are sworn in. You, as you all know, have a new member of Congress, Congresswoman-elect Kelly Morrison. Um, and, uh, will be really, uh, great to see her get into DC, her committee assignments, um, which are being worked out right now by Democratic leadership. And all of her priorities that she will both, uh, work on behalf of the city of Bloomington and the rest of her district. So just one more note, and I'm happy to answer questions if there is time or if that's, um, if, or after, um, later in the presentation. But as we look forward to 2025, um, we will be working under a new Congress that will have new priorities, as I've mentioned. But we do expect to see the same sort of format as we have in past years, which is that in the spring, whether we're, whether we have a full budget for the coming year or not, we will likely, uh, start beginning the process of understanding what Congress is gonna do with earmarks. Earmarks are congressionally directed spending or, um, community project funding or two acronyms that are used essentially line items that your members of Congress request the appropriations committee and pass as federal budget items. And as you recall, we do have a booster station in the current budget, which we hope to pass by March 2025 for 1.2 million dollars. And so that process will likely, um, change a little with new leadership in the committees, um, on the Senate side and possibly be more restrictive. We do, uh, anticipate that local governments, uh, will still be eligible and a lot of infrastructure projects will likely be prioritized. So we'll watch that process closely, be in touch with staff. And I'd just like to say it has been, uh, such a great, uh, learning experience and, um, you know, just really gratifying to spend more time with the city of Bloomington, um, on these projects and learning more about the different focuses of different departments. So appreciate the time, um, that Brianna, kind of that timeline that she laid out. We've, um, our firm, Ryan Kelly, our president and CEO, and I have been, um, so grateful to have that time to, to learn and really dig in on the city's priorities. So thank you so much for having me this evening.
And thank you. Council, any quick questions for Ms. Trantner before we move on to Katie Sen? Very good. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening.
Thanks for sticking it out with us.
Yeah, I know it's been a long night, so I will, I will try to also talk for just about five minutes and then happy to answer questions. But, um, I just wanna start by kind of reiterating what I've heard all of you say this evening, which is how great your staff is to work with and how respected they are at the Capitol. We get a lot of calls for people from all different departments to come and share their expertise because your staff is, is really known, um, for being sophisticated and having a lot of deep expertise in years of service. So you should, should feel proud of that. Um, we also have a really great delegation, I think, works very hard for the city. And so I know when we come to them with our platform that you all are gonna pass, um, next month, they, they really do work very hard to figure out how to strategize and pass it. Also, just a brief, you know, I'm, I should have started by saying I'm Katie Sen. I'm the contract lobbyist. I work at Messerly Kramer. I think I've met all of you. And I really focus on Bloomington-specific bills, so things where we're, we're introducing things just for Bloomington or responding things just for Bloomington, but we work, I work really closely with the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities and, and MLC. So some of those broader city bills, I'm paying attention to them, but my focus is really Bloomington-specific. And, um, obviously feel free to reach out anytime if you have questions. So I'm just gonna very briefly kind of do an overview of the election. I know you all were following it. So I will, um, talk, you know, numbers of what's happening and kind of what might happen next, what we're watching. There is a hundred to 101 divide in the Minnesota House and Senate if you add it together. The House is tied 67-67. The Democrats had been in the majority. The Republicans needed four seats to take the majority and three to tie, and they won three. There's still a couple of elections that are being contested that are currently held by Democrats. So if the, if the courts, um, require new elections in either of those seats and, and if either of those flipped, then that could change the majority. So we're kind of, you know, still waiting on a few things to fall into place. There is no rule in Minnesota about how to break a tie in the House. There was an attempt at some point to add 135th member, so there would not be a tie, and the court struck it down and said you can't have three members in one Senate district, and that's never gonna happen anyway. Don't worry. And now it has. That's the second time since there's been party affiliation ever. And so it's gonna be, you know, something that most of us have never seen before. The House and Senate leader, or the, sorry, the Republican and Democratic leaders need to work out, uh, power sharing agreement, which they are currently in the process of, and they're kind of going step by step. They've decided they're gonna have co-chairs in every committee, one Democrat, one Republican. They're gonna pass the gavel back and forth. They haven't put, there may be restrictions about if they have to have agreement on bills, but that has not been decided yet. I think probably because there are these couple of elections still hanging out there. We don't know who the speaker is yet. There can only be one speaker. And so, um, that's in, that's in law. So they have to figure out how they're gonna do that. Um, and anything that will pass, either committee or the, the committees are all gonna have exactly even number of Democrats and Republicans. So anything that even just gets out of committee is gonna have to have bipartisan support. So probably what that means is things in the House are gonna definitely need bipartisan support and probably just move slowly as they figure out what they're gonna do. They have to pass a budget this year, so that, that does need to happen. The Senate, the Democrats had, had a one-seat majority. There was, of course, one special election in the western suburbs for Kelly Morrison's seat. The Democrats held that seat, so they continue to have a one-seat majority. They have a member in the Senate who has a trial for felony coming up in January. And depending on what happens with that, there could potentially be another, there could be a tie in the Senate if she had to, if she were removed or stepped. be a tie in the Senate if she had to, if she were removed or stepped down, and then they would have to have a special election. So there's a lot of moving pieces in Minnesota. It's very, very closely divided. And so we'll be watching to see what happens there. On the, the other thing I wanted to just touch briefly on is the forecast, which came out the first week of December, was much, much gloomier than it has been and I think than a lot of us expected it to be. Revenues were, were down more than they had been in recent forecasts. So the forecast is showing for the current two-year cycle that they're going to do planning for, there is a surplus of about $600 million. That includes inflation. So it assumes legislate, the legislature will pass bills that account for inflation. If you don't make that assumption, there's about a $1.5 billion surplus. It's a little bit bigger. The real issue is the next two years, the planning years, which they don't have to solve for this year, but they usually attempt to, as, you know, as lots of government units do looking ahead. And there is a deficit in those planning years, a true deficit of over $5 billion if you include inflation and about $3.5 billion deficit if you don't include inflation. So that really puts into context the surplus this year. If you spend that surplus, that deficit gets bigger in the planning years. And so in addition to having a very closely divided legislature, there's also not a lot of money. And so I think it's going to be a lot harder to get things passed, and it's going to be slower. It's going to take a lot of bipartisan support. I do think there's interest in doing a bonding bill, which always takes bipartisan support. So that's good. The forecast put a little damper on the bonding bill too, though. The previous forecast allowed a $980 million in bonding, and you'd still stay within the debt guidelines. Now, based on some of the revenue decreases, that number's gone down to $790 million. So pretty significant drop in the size of the borrowing that they could do for a bonding bill. So there's going to be another forecast in February. So things, obviously, if things turn around, those numbers could change, but that's kind of the, where we're at in November. So I'm happy to answer questions too.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the obvious question. Realistically, is anything going to get done?
They have to pass the two-year budget. So, I mean, every, every committee will have to figure out how to fund all the state agencies and all the programs that aren't automatically funded. And so they will have to pass, they will have to pass stuff. I don't have any vacations planned for sure.
Good call. Any questions for Ms. Sen? Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. More of just a comment. Thank you so much for being here and thank you for the work you do. Bloomington has a reputation, and it's not by accident. It's because of the, the work that you do and how you support us and what we want to see get accomplished in Bloomington. So I really appreciate that because we, we influence a lot of things, and we try to do that to, to support the rest of the state. And I'm very, I'm cautiously optimistic about a bonding bill after hearing from many other council members throughout the state, especially small towns, and not having a bonding bill last year. That really impacted a lot of other communities in Minnesota, and so looking forward to what this is going to bring. But thank you so much for being here.
Yeah, thank you. My pleasure.
Councilmember, others, anything? Very good. Thank you much.
I'm back. Okay, thank you, Katie and Emily. I'm going to turn now to our draft legislative platform for the 25 session. You'll see here that we've listed issues we'd like to lead on during session. These are issues that are specific or unique to Bloomington. The requests that we are looking at are lifting liquor prohibition on the Duane Golf Course, property tax exemption for the Ramada property, funding solar on capital projects, North Central sanitary sewer diversion, and then funding support for our workforce development program, Bloom in Bloomington. And then a little bit longer list is our priorities to support. And so this is the comprehensive list of priorities, and it's many areas that staff are committed to supporting, but are broader issues across the region, state, or nation that are not necessarily unique to our own city. And support from city could mean staff or council providing testimony at hearings, committee or subcommittee work with stakeholder groups, providing letters of support on specific topics or other means as requested. And ultimately, this list helps give staff and our lobbyists guidance on our position. We're still working through the language on some of these items, and so that's why we're happy to bring it to you tonight for, for your look. And then finally, you'll see on, on our list here is the proposed capital budget request. Again, you'll see the North Central Sanitary Sewer Project, Normandale Boulevard Trail, and then finally, the animal shelter. So now it's discussion time. That's the end of the presentation, and we're looking for your feedback on the proposed platform and direction that you would like for us to take, with the reminder that we'll be back on Monday, January 6th to request final adoption of a revised platform before session begins on January 14th. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions or suggestions here? Councilmember Carter, get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. So I did ask this question before the meeting, but I think it's important for the community to hear, especially as we just came out of our budget discussion. So one of the priorities under employment and labor is continued funding for Earn, Sick, and Safe Leave and Minnesota Pay Leave Law. And so my question had been like, wait, are we getting funding to cover our staff that are helping to now execute on those requirements or provide compliance resources, I guess? So can you just talk a little bit more about that priority and what that means for the city? What are we asking?
Yeah, so currently, we do not receive direct funding or reimbursements for that. That's something that we would be asking for so we can continue our program at the city level.
So I think that that's important for people to hear, that if we are going to continue to do it, that we are asking the state to compensate us for providing that, those resources. So, and then the other one that I had a question about, can you talk a little bit more about the well-crafted policies and programs that increase regional housing supply and affordability? Is that just kind of as they come up? We would be a little bit more reactionary center housing?
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, this actually has been a significant study issue over the last couple of years, and we've been very actively engaged with some of our partners, Municipal Legislative Commission, League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities. All are, are working towards the, the housing issue. You may recall last session, missing middle legislation was thoroughly discussed and debated, and ultimately, nothing was done. And the cities are continuing to work to try and find some medium ground with legislators who are looking for action, working with developers. So the, the well-crafted part of that is trying to find language that we can all rally around to support because there are obviously many different interests that are at play. And even among city, you know, city interests, interests of first-string suburbs or older, more developed suburbs are maybe different than some of the still-developing suburbs in this conversation. So it's been a really tough nut to crack.
Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you. Thank you very much for being here. I, I have a specific question about the, maybe the difference between Bloomington-led priorities versus the rest of the, the rest of the document. Do we, do we only take the lead when they're specific to Bloomington? Is that kind of the rule that we're using? So when we say Bloomington-specific requests, those are things that because nobody else is going to pick them up and they're specific to us, we lead on? Or are there opportunities for us to lead on some of the other items? Just kind of curious how those decisions are made? Or maybe it's just vernacular?
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember DeLisandro, what, what we have typically done in time, in terms of identifying projects that we're going to lead on are ones that the council have told us are specifically important for us to work on. And typically, those are Bloomington projects. So we have, I'm trying to recall in my time here if we've actually taken a lead on an issue that has had scope maybe beyond Bloomington, and I'm, I'm hard-pressed to think of one. So, you know, really what we're focused on here are things that are related to what the council has set as strategic priorities or we know are critical issues as, as we're looking forward, whether it's development or related to our operations. The other reason that we want to be really clear about the priorities is for our lobbyist, for, for Katie, to know exactly what she should be focused on, but also for our legislators to, to have a good sense too, right? Because we do work very closely with our delegation, and we want to make sure that our priorities are really clear to them so they know.
Sure. Okay. So, so to that end, there's a couple of questions I have. The first one being, given the, you know, collective dishevelment of our, of our experience related to fiber outlay, I'm surprised not to see the right-of-way stuff not in our priorities. Maybe it's a function of other people are asking for that. And again, I'm not saying it's not priorities to support, like specifically led, Bloomington-led. That's what, that's the question I'm asking. Why isn't it at the top of the list? Because it's been such a painful experience for us, and we probably have a lot of key learnings we could offer in, in pushing an agenda, if you will. So that would be one. The second question I have is, I don't really know, I don't know anything about, and maybe you, maybe it's a port thing or whatever, why we would extend the exemption for Ramada? Like why that's a priority? If, if it's true that council gives direction for our priorities, I don't recall a conversation where we weighed in on that, but maybe I'm wrong. So the other ones make sense to me.
Mr. Brugge.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro, on, on that specific item, we are presenting that for, for council discussion and consideration this year. Since we acquired that property, there's, there's a time period by which it can remain tax-exempt, and we're reaching the sunset essentially of that, of that timeframe. This is a, this is a property that we had specifically held aside from development because we were pursuing a much larger regional interest. This was part of the expo piece.
I remember now. So, so when I read Ramada, I assumed it was related to the Mall of America's Ramada. That's not the Ramada you're referring to. Now I'm clear. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't have any other questions.
It's the property that used to be.
Yep. I understand. Thunderbird or whatever.
Yeah.
Yep, I understand. Thank you for that.
Yep.
Yeah, so just the open question about why we wouldn't be more forward on right-of-way, maybe? I, I don't know.
Yeah, so the right-of-way issue is a tricky one, councilmembers. The, the state law that requires us to make our right-of-way, rights-of-way, to get my plurals right, get the rights-of-way accessible is pretty expansive, and we're really limited in terms of how much we can regulate on our own. This is, this is a big issue for our, our city lobbying partners. So I don't know that it's necessarily something we want, need to take a lead on. I don't know if we would be effective if we were to take the lead on it, just because this is an issue that extends far beyond Bloomington. I think we have a good story to tell in support of that narrative for the organizations that are working on it, because frankly, some of the impacts that we have experienced are greater than has been experienced in other communities, right? So to that point of making our staff available to help inform that narrative at the legislature is going to be really important. I just don't know if it's beneficial to us or if it's productive for us to be in the lead.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Muah, and then we've got to keep moving on the, we've got to keep moving on, gang.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is regarding the, the housing piece. Have we heard any more from last session, the conversation about preemption and zoning in cities? Like, has that died or is that still a conversation that they're interested in?
Mr. Brugge.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Muah, I think with legislature, you never say that anything is completely dead. There's, there's always some sort of zombie provisions that seem to come back. The, the preemption issue was one of the significant concerns that cities had. And I think the legislators, at least the ones who were working on the legislation last year, have recognized that and have largely moved away from preemption, which is why we're trying really hard to try and, to, to find common ground. Because the, you know, what, the message that's been made clear to cities is that the cities have to provide some, something, right? Is, this session, it, it will be less effective to just try to obstruct based on, you know, the, the local control argument. So that's why we're working really hard to try and find that common ground. Yeah. But, so I'd say it's not dead, but I think the legislators realize it's really problematic.
Councilmember Nelson.
Mayor, I won't touch the preemption issue, just for sake of that, because I have a whole different perspective, because I don't think there is such a thing as preemption in that issue, but.
Councilmember Nelson, I saw you giving side-eye during that whole conversation.
I don't want to make an assumption either way, but I just want to see if my colleagues are all familiar with the Minnesota Fair Plan, the reinsurance, and what's going on with many of our multifamily developments and their reinsurance and things like that. I think everyone has gotten information about that, but I just want to make sure, because it sounds absolutely devastating for many communities within our community, the, the costs that they're suffering there. So if everyone's aware of it, then that's all I wanted to make sure, is I just wanted to highlight that, because it's a significant issue.
And I, I think, Councilmember, I, I like this as the high-level discussion. I think we can get into depth in that as we talk about these, these in final form in a couple of weeks here. How about that?
Yeah, that's fine. I just want to make sure people.
Yep. Okay. Anything else? Well, we will see when a couple of weeks in, as we formally adopt these. Thank you to Decady and Emily for joining us and sticking it out with us late into the evening. Appreciate it. It's even later out on the East Coast, so thank you, Emily, if she's still with us.
I am. Thank you all. Good evening. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Thanks. Item 5.2 on our agenda is a discussion regarding missing middle housing. Nick Johnson, speaking of back once again, zombie provisions, he's back once again to talk.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and members. Lacerty, brevity, lacerty, brevity. Okay.
Lacerty and brevity. Yes.
All right, well, we've talked about these issues quite a bit. Thanks for the discussion about it. Just a moment to go from the state legislative perspective. That's interesting. So just a quick agenda slide about what I plan to talk about briefly. And again, we have had a number of discussions about housing and affordability and infill development and all of these things, and this is really a natural continuation of that. So this is our first opportunity to get some actual solutions in front of you and seek some additional guidance on what is the right fit for Bloomington. So just a reminder about what missing middle housing in is. So really what it is, is all housing types that are not single-family that fit between the spectrum, between ADUs all the way up to small apartments. For the purposes of our study, we're capping it at 20 units. That's really the natural breakpoint for us in terms of alignment with the HRA's mission and goals, in terms of their responsibility lane. And going above that is just a product type or a housing type that doesn't fit as well with missing middle housing, in our view. Most common forms of it, we're very familiar with, being two-family dwellings here in Bloomington, ADUs. We've talked about the challenges of, of their development and deployment. You do see more triplexes and quads in Minneapolis and St. Paul and a few other cities in the state of Minnesota. Many of these housing types were constructed 1940s or earlier. Really more restrictive zoning practices came into place at that time. And I think the one message of the things that we've learned about this topic is that if you put all your eggs in a single-family and multifamily basket, you're just going to have a less diverse housing stock that really meets a wide variety of residents' needs throughout the spectrum or the arc of their life, or different life circumstances or situations or desires. So what is missing middle housing? There's a lot of different types. The other thing I would urge is not to get too fixated on one specific kind or another. There's really some that we're really familiar with, some that maybe fit more in the low debt, low to medium density, and then others that maybe fit more in that medium density that are more similar to small apartments. So why do we need missing middle housing? We had other data that kind of presented a more national perspective in the staff report, but this is just a reminder about housing cost burden and affordability trends that are specific to Bloomington. So that's a key feature of this, is that providing more tools like this is going to give nonprofit and other partners more opportunities to create affordable homeownership opportunities in Bloomington as they look at ways of doing various forms of infill development. Another reason is, has to do with Bloomington's demographics, you know, the fourth oldest city in the state. We do need to diversify our housing. We do need to diversify our housing stock. We do have a fair number of townhomes and two family dwellings in comparison to some of our peers, but you always need more of those housing types and they're really popular. The vacancy of those does not stick for very long. So those are key components of that. I'll keep chugging along here. In terms of how successful we've been at getting some middle housing types built in the last seven years, it's been a challenge. We're all familiar with the, or I should say, many of you are familiar with the zoning amendments that occurred last year. One of the challenges of that effort was that it was rolled out in a fairly challenging construction environment in terms of the cost of borrowing, cost of labor, land, those things. So the regulatory landscape is only one subcomponent of kind of what the barriers are to housing creation. But regardless of the the environment, we staff, we as staff strongly feel that you want to try and work ahead of the next opportunity to create more of these housing types. So we've created two family dwellings intermittently throughout this seven year time period. We have constructed a few new single family homes. Most of those are replacing existing homes, hence that, the net new figure there. But yeah, generally 19 new units over the course of 2017, when factoring out the demo, the units that were demoed to create these. So this is the reality. This is kind of what we are facing and what we're working on. In many ways, even just getting a few sites done can sometimes feel like a monumental task at times, but it's the reality. So how can we add missing middle housing? So moving on to kind of the meat of what this discussion's about, we really have different solutions in two different buckets. The first bucket are amendments and tweaks to existing standards of ours, and those, these amendments are really focused on further unleashing more or lowering barriers for ADUs and two family dwellings are really the primary focus of that first bucket. The other thing I'll say about the first bucket is that these are things that are very well known to staff and probably can proceed to, if there's support for them, to an ordinance before a public hearing setting fairly rapidly. These are things that we can put together in a more rapid timeline. The second bucket are things that we're seeking your guidance on tonight in terms of directionally where to go, and we need to do a little bit more analysis on some other minute, missing middle housing types that we in Bloomington are a little bit less familiar with. The reason I say that, it's not just creating zoning standards, but every new use we create and where we allow it is also a conversation with our infrastructure partners and public works about how to serve those new use types and where there is adequate capacity on our streets and our sanitary sewer system and those kinds of things in order to serve these housing types. So we're hoping in that second bu- bucket to get some kind of general guidance and we'll be able to hit the ground running on that and go from there. So the first bucket, these are amending existing code standards. As I mentioned, these things are primarily focused on ADUs and two family dwellings. I will note that for the purposes of brevity and alacrity, the, what we did with the Planning Commission and HRA is we had them review each one of these line by line individually. And so hopefully, what you noticed in the the staff report and in these tables on these slides, is kind of where that alignment is built between the city's advisory boards and commissions who are focused on these topics. And if it's okay with you, I'll proceed through these. And what I'm looking for is just general support for these shared direction between these two bodies. If there's questions about any one of these things individually, I certainly can take those questions. But what we're really looking for is just affirmation that this is the right direction to proceed in, and then we can go forward. So the first couple, the ADU owner occupancy requirement, this has to two, has to do with how many rental licenses are permitted at a site within ADU. Right now, it's limited to one. The ADU proportionate size requirement, this caps how big an ADU can be in relationship to the principal dwelling of a home, some potential solutions there. The rear yard setback, so currently ADUs are subject to principal dwelling setbacks. It's a 30-foot rear yard setback. We found in a couple of situations that it can be quite prohibitive or a barrier to ADU creation on some lots. ADU front bar, front yard setback and placement, this was a discussion at council, I, I want to say, two miscellaneous issue cycles ago, and that's something that also had support from the Planning Commission and HRA, and this really could affect corner lots, most notably. And then two family dwellings in the R3. Well, I'll just stop there. Is there any questions about these provisions related to ADUs?
Also questions on the slide?
Or any general feedback about that?
Feedback in general, councilmember De La Sandro?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, feedback or questions?
Either or.
Okay. On the first one, I would not be, I would not be in favor of that, only because I'd really like us to get to short term rentals. So as you all know, I'm a fan of the short term rental, and one of the reasons I've indicated my support for short term rentals is largely because of the owner occupancy. Like, that's the scenario in which I feel comfortable doing that. If we do this, then we remove our ability to do owner occupied ADUs as a short term rental. So I just want to put those two things together for everybody. That's why I would oppose that first one. The second one, I actually think, this one is really valuable to me. There are several folks in my district who would like the, like to rent out their ADU but can't because it has this size problem. In fact, it's almost exactly the footprint, because it's the basement, right? It's so the, almost the exact footprint of the upstairs of the house. And so I would not be in favor of the maximum standard size, but I think if we could, if we could specifically define something, if it's, if it's a specific, like a basement ADU, an in dwelling ADU, if it's the same size, it might be okay, or something to that effect. So those are the two. The, the rest of them here, I think I can support just fine. Thank you.
Others, thoughts? Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm gonna have to think about councilmember De La Sandro's comments on the first one, because I didn't see that. I decided it's taking away the limitation, but not forcing you to rent out the whole place. It just provides the opportunity so you could still have your house and an ADU, or you could rent out the house and the ADU. It's optional. So I didn't see it that way, but maybe I'm missing something. Second one is number five, two family. My only question on that is, I mean, the purpose of the R3 is to get additional housing units, and is that sort of a step backwards? I might as well just rezone it to R1 at that point.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Nelson, so just to provide a little heads up on the item number five that's listed in this table currently, it's really just intended to provide more flexibility amongst the development, so you could envision a scenario where a townhome developer wanted to create a townhome with traditional townhomes or other middle housing types, but then off on the side do a series of two family dwellings. Currently, it's not an allowed use in this district. So it's really just, I mean, they theoretically could keep that portion zoned R1, so that might be a potential solution. But basically, if there's a theme for missing middle housing, it's more flexibility, less hurdles, in general.
Councilmember Reves?
Just a question. After the map and the all the information you provided, now I'm a little more familiar with this. I do have a question, though. Are there any plans for specific areas in the city to to create these middle housing? And if so, it's a dual question, actually. Are you planning on going ahead with this after the improvements under the water and sewer systems are needed? It's, I can't imagine in areas that are old houses to add these extra, is the capacity already, has the capacity already been considered with these or still up in the air?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Reves, thank you for that question. So particularly these items in bucket number one that we'll discuss, bucket number two is a little bit different answer, but bucket number one, most of these things are applicable to the R1 zoning district, which is geographically distributed throughout the community. It's basically all single and two family dwellings are zoned R1 in the city. So that's, that's really the whole of the the city. Thankfully, on the, the second question related to capacity and infrastructure, you know, most of these types of developments are not of a density or scale that really drive a lot of that sanitary sewer capacity or other challenges, some maybe traffic to a degree. So I don't anticipate that. That's certainly something that we'll look at particularly with those types that do have a little bit more density associated with them, or as what they'd refer to as gentle density. But that's really more in that second bucket, and that involves rezoning typically, and I'll talk about that and kind of the discretion that offers the city to evaluate each development on a case by case basis.
Thank you.
Yep.
Council, we gotta move on here.
So if I can just make, thank you, Mayor, can I make one last point just about the rental piece? And thank you for your question about that. And the reason that staff, A, is just that this has the potential to stimulate more ADU creation, and frankly, the reason being is that some property, some owners who have a rental license who rent out their property might be incentivized to create an ADU if they can rent out both structures, so that's one component of it. The other component is just that from a, from a impact standpoint, staff use it as equal or lesser than as a two family dwelling. If you can get two rental licenses at a two family dwelling, from our perspective, it's fairly equivalent to to do it with an ADU. That's just ours. I understand that there's slightly different characteristics versus a side by side or an up down versus a smaller dwelling in the back, so there's going to be different little nuances to it. But just to give you that background, on the short term rental, I think that that is more capped by the length of stay versus who's, who's staying and in how many units, but I welcome your feedback.
Yes, that's fair. I, I won't belabor it, but I think, I think that there's an unintended consequence there. When we talked about short term rentals, people, that, I think the overwhelming support for short term rentals in unoccupied residences was a big no here. And, and so now we're basically just shutting down short term rentals for anything that has one or two properties if you can't, you're not occupying them. And that's the reason. Good question about who would be first to build an ADU? Somebody who would be like to rent it for the long term, or somebody who would like to rent it for the short term? I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Certainly something to keep tracking and follow up on. So getting to the second, this is the remainder of the items in bucket number one, which is kind of amendments to existing codes. So these are more focused on two family. So allowing currently two family dwellings must have attached garages, allowing for detached garages to serve at two family dwelling sites. Garage setbacks currently setback, or garages are subject to different standards than single family sites. Garages on corner lots, right now it requires directing the driveways on a corner site for two family dwelling to two different local roads. So again, it's just kind of inhibiting that creative design component. Two family lot size requirements, so one of the elements of the amendments we did in May of 2023 is that it really was envisioning how most side by side two family dwellings are constructed in Bloomington, in addition to providing those additional setback requirements for garages and other things. And so there really is, if we're looking at kind of industry best standard or some of the data from some of our peers, there is an ability to lower that even a little bit lower, to bring more sites as potential opportunities for two family dwelling development, because really what it's not accounting for is the possibility of up down two family dwellings. So that's another opportunity, is just to lower some of those requirements. Landscaping, this is a lower voltage one, but currently we have landscaping requirements for two family dwellings. We don't do that for a single family. I love trees and shrubs. It's not a against trees and shrubs thing, it's the amount of staff capacity it takes and the financial sureties that are required to execute it, not meeting the cost benefit there. The last one on the R3 density region, we'll talk about R3 more in the second bucket, but right now, when we, since we amended our conference of plan to increase the density of the low density residential category up to 12 units per acre, right now, the R3 is capped at eight units per acre, and that might be acceptable or the right approach, given the housing types that are allowed and could be allowed there in the future. It might be good to have that capped at eight. But one of the things we talked about is potentially increasing that to 12 to just align with that category. There was some discussion about, you know, recent townhome projects in town and like what the density might have looked like on some of those sites. And so it, it was, it was back and forth. This is where I would say the only item in the first bucket, where the Planning Commission HRA were more on the fence. So just to, to report that out. But if there's any questions about this bucket here or this slide, otherwise I can keep going if there's general council support for these items.
Councilmember Carter, and then councilmember Loman.
So I asked this question before, and I know you answered me, but I just want to clarify. So for this bucket, staff would, you've already put it on your 2025 work plan that you'll be working on missing middle housing.
Correct.
So anything on this, if we're like, yep, good to go, you would just consider that part of that project, which you've already accounted for, for staff time and capacity?
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Carter, that's correct. So we are, we'll be at your meeting on January 6th, and we'll present the work plans, one of my favorite items to present, good discussion. And we are anticipating a carryover of missing middle housing, so anything we're talking about, there should be adequate staff capacity, and there's staff who are excited to work on this project next year. And, you know, given the clarity of the, that legislation not moving forward, I think we have more momentum or energy of just what we need to do at the city level and not wait for the state partners. So yes, we, we should have adequate capacity.
Thank you. I ask because I do feel like it's usually the Planning Commission work plan that we're like, oh, let's do it, and then we're like, okay, but then what are we taking off of the Planning Commission work, or the planning work plan? And so just wanting to make sure that we're being cognizant of that as we move forward.
Great, thank you for that question.
Thank you. I'll try to ask real quick questions here. So I imagine with all of these items here, that we're seeing other cities around here and across the country, that these are successful proposals, they, they can work in, in terms of trying to, to succeed with our missing middle.
Yeah, Mayor, councilmember Loman, thanks for that question. So I think the items that we're kind of identifying for you in this first bucket are more Bloomington specific, they're less peer reviewed, and the reason I say that is that it's really in the weeds of the Bloomington zoning code. These are already things that we've identified as a staff and working on real projects that have been an impediment or barrier. So it's probably that second bucket where more of that peer city research is happening. Here within this region, as you know, Minneapolis and St. Paul have both elevated their low density district up to four and three units respectively. Many cities around the country are going in that direction as well. There's also been, you know, in some cases, litigation against those types of policy decisions, but as long as it's well buttressed and founded in your comprehensive plan, which it is strongly in the Bloomington comp plan, and certainly anticipate will be a feature of the 2050 plan, as long as we continue to build those policy bulk, blocks underneath it, and there's adequate infrastructure to serve the, the development, I think that's really the key feature. And so that's really what getting ahead in the next bucket is, working towards is making sure that we have those protections in place. And I've long advocated that, you know, some of the, you know, they call it gentle density, but when you add more people in a area, you know, there is a higher potential for some nuisance characteristics, but the, the great thing about Bloomington is that they have just an absolute crack environmental health squad who deal with a lot of, you know, vehicles on a site or property maintenance issues.
I think that's the part that you've kind of hit on that I'm concerned about with these, of course, I want to, you know, move in this direction, but that, I'm concerned about that. So let me just ask just a couple of last questions here. The, so I think councilmember Reves and I were in a, in a, in a class at the NLC, and they were talking about with these types of developments, one of the things that cities are starting to do is they are looking at pre approvals for, for site plans to, to not only allow those larger developers kind of get in there, be able to take advantage of that, but also these smaller developers to be able to get into this space, because that's a space where those developers, you know, have, have you heard about that at all? Is that something you've heard? Is that something, is that, is that a tactic that we're utilizing?
Thank you for that question, Mayor, councilmember Loman. So that is a tactic that some cities are using. Most of the pre approved, approved plans that I've seen are typically in denser cities that are alley loaded type neighborhoods. And so I think the, and we'll check in on this again, but AARP has been a huge supporter of missing middle housing, and they've been working on trying to create different templates and documents. The thing is that, that you almost have to create a jurisdictional specific template plan, because every city's going to have different stormwater management, every city's going to have different utility requirements or driveways or other things. So it's something we could look at, it, it will cost money.
We could take that offline and talk about that. So my last one is, so this is just more of an educational thing on my hand, or my idea, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. So let's look at this 11, the, the D3 density portion. So I'm assuming that if we have those eight to 12 units on a site, that you wouldn't also be able to add ADUs to that, right? I mean, that would, that would preclude that ability to do that? Or am I, am I wrong with that? Or if you had like a, you know, on the other page, we had the, you know, you do a duplex, would that preclude from having ADU? Or could you have an ADU? Just help me to understand. I just want to make sure.
Mayor, councilmember Loman, this will be a fun time when I tack out of both sides of my head about, I just said flexibility is the key. ADUs are not allowed in R3, and the reason being is that ADUs are really a development type that is supposed to be accessory to a, a single family dwelling or a low density site in effect. R3 is more intended to be a medium density district, so it allows townhomes. Well, there's, there'll be some discussion about what middle types to potentially allow there, but ADUs are not a, yeah, so no, they wouldn't be allowed to be added on top of.
If I have a duplex on a site and there was enough space, I could do an ADU on that site. site.
ADUs are not currently allowed at a two-family site either, right now. That's uh, in the standards of the ADUs. So.
Thank you. Thanks for that.
You bet. Okay, so.
We gotta move on, council.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the new standard. So on this component, so as I mentioned on the first two buckets, or the first bucket, those last two slides, those are really things that are in the can and ready to go. If they're supported, they're things that we know how to change and what kind of the infrastructure impacts are and how to proceed with an ordinance. It's these other things that we're really looking for your more direction to do additional research and analysis of our code of what to pursue. I'll be frank that this will likely require us to come back in some type of study session format, because these, these ordinance amendments would be more complex and would really need your feedback prior to wanting to schedule a public hearing. So just thinking about that bucket differently as well. So in the first two items, townhomes, low-density townhomes, our comp plan calls for allowing low-density townhomes in our low-density districts. So what does that look like? That could look like a cottage court. It could look like, you know, two or three small detached townhomes on a, on a R1 site. So when describing that in those terms, that use was supported by the planning commission and HRA. Similar in R3, R3 already allows townhomes. We have pretty rigid townhome standards right now in terms of requiring attachment and the certain number of units that it must have. So just a note on one, one and two, this is A and two there on that slide, sorry about that. But it's in effect allowing some form of detached townhomes. The third and fourth one, or I'm sorry, the third one, a multiplex. A multiplex is basically a small apartment building. And so there was discussion about whether or not, and it's capped at greater than four units but less than 15. Is that something that's an appropriate use for the R3 district, or R4, or RM12 district? RM12 already allows multifamily. R3 does not. So for example, if you cap the number of units in a small, effectively apartment building, does that then make it a good candidate for a medium-density district? And the other reason to do that is that our larger multifamily buildings are subject to, by comparison, fairly strict standards related to enclosed parking and storage and other things that really are more warranted for higher-density sites. The height limits map, some of missing middle types are three stories in height. You've seen that kind of around the country is one way to build in more density is to allow for a little bit taller buildings. That's supported from a sustainability standpoint, because you can have smaller footprints. It's called the stacked flats is really what that is. And so one of the things to look at, and there might be a project on this preview on the planning commission work plan, not specific to missing middle types, but should the city evaluate its height limits map, which effectively caps height at two stories or 40 feet for all of our low-density areas. Live work, live work is a thing that was adopted into the code in 2019 as part of our industrial zoning district updates. Right now, live work is only limited to industrial zoning districts. So think of the cabinet maker, or the someone who owns a shop, and they want to create a small apartment in the back. Right now, that's limited to industrial. So one of the ways to potentially increase housing and kind of a mixed-use format would be to also allow live work in our neighborhood commercial districts. That's your B2, your B4, those types of sites. So I'll pause there. All of those things had some support from the planning commissioner and HRA. The only maybe on that was to allow more than one unit as a live work in our neighborhood commercial. But I think these things, the next slide maybe digs more heavy into the other minute missing middle types, but I'll pause here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick question. Would, item number three, would that be a possible way to encourage more condo-type development, where you could do owner-occupied, similar to like a townhome, but maybe you could get up a few more units and do a condo?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for that question. So that is one of the, on our to-do list of, as an additional step of research, is talking about ownership models for these missing middle types that are not side-by-side or land-based. You know, the, we're finding more problems with HOAs, but that's more historic or older HOAs. So that's kind of a component of it, and we have the state statutory, you know, restrictions or limits. However, if you're doing it in a smaller scaled project, I would think that those capital sureties or requirements is lesser. So it's probably more feasible. And I think that has been done in Linden Hills and other Northeast Minneapolis and other upscale, lower-density areas, I guess I would describe that as. So that's something we can look at. And I think that it's important to answering this question about whether or not these types offer more ownership opportunities. That's something we can definitely bring back. Okay, any other questions about this or anything that gives kind of significant pause? I guess I'd say, one thing I forgot to say about the second bucket, which is critical. So you'll notice a lot of the questions are either allow this in R1, or allow it in R3 or R4. I just want to remind the council that any action that, we only have one site that zoned R3 in the whole city. We have some R4s, but those are historic apartments, basically, or older apartments. They're not historic. They're just a little bit older apartments. And anytime the city is rezoning land, that's a highly discretionary action on the part of the council. So one way to think about some of these missing middle types is that if you limit it to R3 or above, that's going to involve a rezoning. And so that gives you the discretion, to Councilmember Rivas's question about where do you allow it, and does it have the proper infrastructure in place? That whenever there's a rezoning action, the city council is going to have wide latitude and discretion to, on how they act on that application. So I do want to emphasize that. Okay, keep moving forward. Thank. So on this last slide, this is where I think we hit more pause on the part of the planning commission and HRA. And I think that made some sense, because I think that's inviting a little bit more of that density into areas that are predominantly single-family. So looking at a stacked flats use, potentially in the R3 or R12, not in R1, but looking at it in R3 or R12. And I think the, the on-the-fence aspect of this, if I'm just capturing their discussion correctly, was, had to do with building height. So stacked flats typically are three stories in height, and having a discussion around whether or where it's appropriate to have that type of use. Courtyard apartments, also very similar to multiplex. It's similar to apartments, but it allows individual entries into a courtyard, as opposed to a, as opposed to a single entrance lobby with, you know, exiting typical egress like you'd have in a multifamily. Those were both maybes on both parties. Triplex in R1, so those were either as a permitted or conditional use that was not supported by the planning commission and HRA board. And the same for the fourplex use in R1. You could potentially allow those in R3. I think you'd have had a slightly different response related to R3 for that district that's more medium-density. It wouldn't, as, as a planner, it wouldn't make sense to me to allow a large townhome development, but not allow a triplex, if that makes sense in that district. So I took this feedback to be more geared towards R1 single-family. So hopefully that makes some sense. But yeah, happy to answer any questions. And again, these, this slide and the last slide is really intended to give us the marching orders for what uses we should be trying to create and what standards, and where would they be allowed in our existing zoning districts.
Well, I, I don't know the council's thoughts, but I, I mean, I, just looking at the last couple of slides, I tend to agree with the planning commission and the HRA. I, I might go on this slide beyond maybe, and I would say supportive with the stacked flats, and perhaps the missing middle courtyard, just because I think they allow a little bit more creativity and flexibility, and would perhaps get a developer thinking a little bit about how they could, how they could do this. That would be my thought. Councilmember Nelson?
Mayor, I would agree with your thought process, and actually, what was presented on all of these, particularly with the, if they're in R3, and we have discretion, and we, we don't have a lot of R3, so someone could bring an idea forth, we could take a look at it, and we could say, hey, you know what? You can't put a three-story thing next to, you know, this whole bunch of ramblers right next door, one-story houses. You know, that just doesn't feel compatible. Or we could take and look at it and go, seems great. Seems like a really good use of it. So because we have that discretion, I would be supportive of all of those in R3, in, in the R3 areas.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Lohman.
Well, I mean, I think this gives us an opportunity for some of those, you know, some of those major roads that we're looking at, you know, like Penn Avenue and some of those places where maybe R1 doesn't make sense anymore across the city, and kind of look at some of this. So I would, I would tend to agree with that in terms of, we could look at that, and, you know, especially as we're, as we're looking at some of those streets where we have, you know, that capacity of, of traffic that's there. One of the ways of kind of protecting the, the other parts of the cities to have this kind of as a, as a buffer between, between this and the other residential zones. So, yeah, I think this is an interesting way to kind of look at it. So.
Other thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I can just present one last slide here about our process. So this is what we've done so far and what we plan to do next. One question we wanted to put before you, it's a process question. But if we, if there's general consensus or alignment around those, those phase one or the first bucket, changes to existing code, one option is to fast-track those ordinance amendments to try and take advantage of the next year's construction cycle, to try and get them done by a reasonable time, to try and help support ADUs and two-family dwellings. The secondary option to that would be just to bring these all together as one bulk thing. But that includes, you know, mixing in more of these complex middle housing types with the stuff that's related to ADUs and two-family. I think as a staff, we would recommend the first option. It does carry with it a little bit more overhead of additional public hearings and whatnot, but I think it would be worth it in the end.
I, I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Johnson. And I also, I mean, I think we do it with the understanding, and we've seen it, it's not going to result in a flood of, yes, we get it ready for next construction season. It's not like we're going to see 180Us in, in the next construction season. If we get one or two, based on some of that, that would be a, a grand success, I would think. Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks, Mayor. My only comment on that, and I, I agree with your assessment, but my only comment on that is, we actually may in the next year have some larger parcels that become available for residential uses based on some other organizational decisions. And I would just want to make sure that we're open to taking a look at how we can, you know, maximize the use of those in a way that's consistent with the neighborhoods that they're in. Is that vague enough? I can, I can try to be more vague. So I just want to telegraph to the, you know, development community that our planning department would be open to having those discussions, even if you're not all the way through that process.
Mayor, Mayor, I think that, Councilmember Nelson, I think that makes sense. I mean, I would always advocate that that's why cities develop plan development tools. I know they're not ideal in certain ways, but if people are trying to seek flexibility to certain standards, they have to meet a public benefits test, and we'll have an open-air public hearing like anything else. So, yep. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the time.
Thanks.
Have a good night. Take care.
Counsel, as, as we go to item 5.3, the American Boulevard Transit Study, we're going to have to extend here. So I'm going to make a motion that we extend to go no later than 11:30 this evening. Motion in a second to extend no later than 11:30. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're going to 11:30. Mr. Roberts, good evening. Thanks for sticking it out with us.
Mr. Mayor Councilmembers, thank you for time. Just with you tonight, we're kicking off work on the American Boulevard Transit Study. We're here tonight, and then Planning Commission on Thursday to gather feedback. In brief, American Boulevard, the section we're studying, East Bush Lake Road over to 34th Avenue, the National Wildlife Refuge. The, Bloomington, the past 10 years, has been the significant beneficiary of a lot of transit investment with the opening of the Orange Line, the D Line. Before that, there was the, the red line down across the river, the blue line, all converging on South Loop. In our long-term plan, and in Metro Transit's long-term plan, arterial BRT was always in there, along American Boulevard, to kind of connect all of these routes. And so we were a bit dismayed in the, in the latest update of that to find that, that it was no longer in the plan. And it's no criticism on Metro Transit, they're, they're a wonderful transportation partner. They've got some new priorities and, and some criteria here, and we were a little bit below those. They've agreed to keep this in their long-term plan, but what they're asking for the city to do is, is do some of the, the initial work on that, do some of the initial study. And that's important to us. If you look at transit use in Bloomington, American Boulevard is a significant corridor for transit. And so they, that's what brings us here tonight, is starting off that study effort. The, the need for the study, the base need, is just to preserve that, preserve American Boulevard BRT in the long-term transit plan. The second up is to start to develop the criteria around arterial BRT line in partnership with, with Metro Transit. Further, it's not just enough here just to insist it stay in their plan, but the questions that I have are, what can the city do to create an attractive corridor for continued investment? So we can continue rolling forth with the investment we've seen in transit that's transformed the city in recent years. And that could be just missing, you know, last mile connections or, or other land use changes or things like that, just to help make this corridor much more supportive. Our, American Boulevard has always been a bit of a reliever for the 494. And so the city has worked for 40 years to help push forward those improvements that are now taking place on the 494. So this comes at a really key point. With those improvements, the increases in capacity on 494, the question now is, what does the city think American Boulevard needs to be for the city of Bloomington, instead of as a reliever for this very busy interstate? And so that's another goal of this, is to say, what's, what, what do we want that road to be? What does a community think it needs to be? And so to help us along in that work, I'm happy to have Adele Hall from SRF Consulting. She's a very experienced transit planner, and she's going to lead the city in this effort, as well as the rest of this discussion.
Good evening, almost good morning, Ms. Hall. Thanks for being here with us tonight.
Good evening. As Kirk said, my name is Adele Hall, and I'm the consultant team project manager. I'm from SRF Consulting. Thank you for having me. So it's my charge tonight to give you just an overview of what this study entails, kind of its scope and schedule. I will keep this brief. We do intend to start with evaluating existing conditions along American Boulevard. And we're going to do this both from a transportation perspective, looking at bus ridership and transit conditions, biking, walking conditions, driving a bit, and land use and development patterns as well in the corridor. We're doing this from a technical perspective. We're looking at things like your, your bike use data, your pedestrian crossing data, that sort of thing. But we do also intend to go out to the public and do some public engagement in January. So I wanted to give you all a heads up about our intentions there. We are intending to do a, an online survey using your existing tools. We intend to take that survey out onto the Route 542, which is running on American Boulevard today. We are intending to host an open house in mid-January. Exact date, time, and location to be determined. And then we also intend to meet with some individual stakeholders, community stakeholders that staff in the community engagement department are identifying. So all of that is planned for January, and that's all a really important input to developing a vision for the corridor, which is my main purpose of my presentation today. In addition to giving this overview, is to ask all of you at 11:00 PM at night about your vision for the American Boulevard corridor. And this vision is really important. It really informs how the consultant team develops concepts for what American Boulevard could be. And I've got an example up here. And, and this is sort of our way of reflecting back in a physical sense, what that vision is. So if a vision is for safer pedestrian environment, you might see concepts that have wider sidewalks or a planted boulevard that acts as a buffer between a street and a sidewalk, that sort of thing. And we'll develop these concepts throughout the American Boulevard corridor, and then we'll get into evaluating them. And that evaluation, again, really stems from that vision. What's really important along American Boulevard? Things that we often evaluate transit corridors on are, what does, what do these improvements do for transit ridership? How much do they cost? How much will they cost to operate over the long term? What, what do the changes do for walking or biking conditions? What are the land use or do for walking or biking conditions? What do the land use or development pattern changes look like? How do all these changes potentially affect greenhouse gas emissions or vehicle miles traveled? So we will do all of that evaluation. Then we do have a second public engagement phase planned in summer of next year, to go back out and talk with people about what we've learned, what we've seen, what we've designed, and get some general feedback, and kind of understand, where do we go with next steps from there? And we will put together a next steps report that does address the, the items that Kurt was listing about, how, you know, how do you go forward with arterial BRT or other transit improvements in the American Boulevard corridor? What needs to happen after that? So that's our charge. To keep it brief, I will kind of skip over this next slide, but in essence, we're working on drafting a vision statement about American Boulevard, and we'd like your feedback tonight, some ideas, kind of thinking about what would be your ideal outcome of the study? What would the team focus on during this transit study? What are your priorities for the American Boulevard corridor? And I'll stand for questions and listen.
Thank you. Counsel, first thoughts on this? Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I kind of think about, from when I was younger, this idea of the Bloomington Strip. You know, it had this, you know, people wanted to come to it, and I'm not saying that's what we want to do here, but it just had that, you know, the region knew about this, this area where people wanted to be at. And I've had the opportunity, when I've traveled, you know, for various conferences, to see, the latest one was when I was in Tampa, I took a streetcar tour, and I was really, just really impressed with how they utilize that to move people through the different areas and zones within the city. And I, and I've thought about, you know, what would that revitalization look like, you know, if we were able to do that for, you know, that, that, the American Boulevard, to move people up and down that, that corridor. And then also, I think about what's happened in Kansas City, in terms of what they have there, they've got that, you know, and so, I mean, I think they're both free, and I don't know how you pay for that. So, I mean, after that conversation, I want to be careful about saying anything that's free. But it was interesting to watch how the development grew around that, that idea of allowing people to just jump on there and go to the different corridors. And then just to kind of wrap this up very quickly, because I know we're, we're late here. So, you know, I'm hoping that as we look at these ideas for outcomes of the study, that we drive economic renewal across the, the area. That as we look at the team focus, you know, obviously, we have a, our, our focus around sustainability and, and a revival, reliability, economic vibrancy across that, that corridor, and just really just trying to find ways in which to make it the, it place to, to be in the city, and connecting to other corridors that we have within the city. That's, that's sort of what I look at in terms of these, these items.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would agree with everything Councilmember Lowman just said. Listening to my father-in-law, my mother-in-law, who grew up here, and talking with some of our officers who used to come up here, American Boulevard was their, the place to be. And so as we, we envision American Boulevard, I would love to see a parking ride spot. I can, for me, for example, I'm not going to take three young kids on a bus. This is not going to happen to get to American Boulevard, but I will drive there. I think I could park there and take a bus or tram or whatever up and down American Boulevard to visit shops and restaurants, and have that livelihood from France all the way down to the mall. I think that's something we can use to anchor as those two core attractions that we have, and really drive that development, and, and just like excitement back into that, that road. So I, I think that there's huge opportunity for different ways to think, different ways to get people there, and get people up and down that road, to really experience what Bloomington has.
So as the gray-haired guy, I want to clarify that, that American Boulevard was never the strip. The 494 strip was where it was all happening. It was never American Boulevard.
No, no, I know that, but...
American Boulevard was built as a, basically a reliever for 494, especially when the Mall of America was built.
And I think you're missing my point. My point is, is that that isn't, doesn't exist anymore, but during that, that corridor, my idea is, is that can we go back to that vibrancy of that time? Not, not, I don't think that's, I totally get it, that was not the strip, totally get it. And since I'm talking, let me just mention one other thing. The walking trail that they had in Tampa really was an interesting thing, too, because it wasn't just the streetcar, but they also had a walking trail that they, you know, it just kept growing and getting bigger and bigger, so.
And, and it's interesting to hear, because I'm thinking a bit more utilitarian, because we've heard a couple of things. Well, first of all, I, I know what it was originally made for. It was a reliever to get people to and from Mall of America, but what we've heard from a lot of different folks is the lack of east-west transit connections in the city of Bloomington. And so, I mean, my priority, my vision, would be an effective and efficient, some sort of transit in that, on that area. And I know there's transit there now. I don't know that I would say effective and efficient for even, for any of the transit that's there now. And I go back and forth between, I mean, the combination of a BRT, which I get, and is probably well-suited for that, but I don't think that does, that that's a bit of a disservice for the folks who need more local service also. You know, stopping every 10 blocks as opposed to every other block is a different kind of thing. And, I mean, I'm, maybe I'm thinking just a little bit more practical on this, that this is an opportunity to have the, that east-west connection in Bloomington, and then somehow also couple that with north-south connections, because we have decent north-south connections. So, I mean, if we, if we ended, if, if that was basically the east-west and then north-south, we ended up with something on, you know, Lindale, Penn, France, and, you know, how, you know, however you figure it out. But basically, to make that kind of the, the northern spine, which gets people around, but then up and down as well. I don't know, it's... I mean, Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I tend to agree with you, and I think that this corridor already has visions in different places. I mean, part of this goes through South Loop, which has its own district plan. Part of it goes through the Penn American District, which has its own plan. You know, there are, I don't know, there isn't continuity along American in terms of having a vision for the entire thing. So I like the idea, this is, how do we get you across there? The other thing that I will add is just making sure that we take a look at public safety. You know, we do know that there are a higher number than average numbers of crimes reported along this corridor in certain sections. And, you know, how can we use this to help that revitalization that Councilmember Lowman talked about, and address public safety? Because you can put whatever you want there, if it's not safe, no one's going to go on it. So, make sure it's safe.
Councilmember Revis, and then Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Revis?
I agree with you, Mayor. I, I think it would be a good idea to have Lindale, Penn, maybe, France, and from the Mall of America all the way out to France, like sort of you suggested. I think it would be nice. A, a streetcar like in Tampa would be nice. Not free, though.[1080.25][1080.25][laughter] I had to say that. It was free down there, and it was fun riding that thing. It was any time of the day. I, I remember I got charged for using a cab that I never used. I rode the, the, the streetcar, remember that? I went back to the hotel, yeah. It was, it, it's, it was pretty fun riding that thing. It was clean, safe. It feel, it felt unsafe when I was waiting for it at 1:00 in the morning to get back to the hotel, but, but I, I mean, it wasn't bad. I wasn't partying, okay? I went to a Hispanic dinner, and then I got stuck there, and I had to make it, I had to make it back. I didn't know how. But anyway, the, the, the transportation was awesome, right? I, I mean, it, it was, and it was free. I was amazed that you just jumped on that thing and it took you places, but it's amazing what they do there. But again, the city is like, maybe 10 times bigger than us. No, like five times or so bigger than us. But the, the walk along the river, amazing, too. I mean, I put a lot of miles on that thing myself, so. But it's, yeah, it would be kind of a, you know, I don't know, I, I, I would use it if it was safe. I don't like to ride the train to the stadium, to the US Bank Stadium, because it doesn't feel safe when you ride that thing. But if we were able to provide sa- security there, and especially around Nicollat and American, it's not, you know, doesn't feel too good in there, but that would be nice.
Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I, in looking at the draft vision statement and what my colleagues on council have said, I agree, and I, I really like the vision. I just struggle because it is a collector road, or whatever the technical term is, right? And I drive it often, and cars are going very fast, and so it just doesn't, it's hard for me to envision a walkable, bikable, pedestrian-friendly corridor across the north side of our city, butted up against 494. But if we can, you know, paint the picture and figure out how to get there, I mean, I think it would be great. Like, I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I just, it's very hard for me to, to imagine. It just feels like we have two conflicting, like a, like the practical, that it's a collector road, and then the desire to have it a walkable, bikable, like enjoyable experience. And so, yeah. So, and then I was going to say something else to the last part of that conversation, but now I forget. It's too late. My brain's starting to shut down. But yes, I am excited to be having the conversation, so, thank you.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. Last piece. I will say, I have not been particularly happy with Met Transit and the things that they decided to do in Bloomington, especially bumping things like this. I, if we're going to do this work, I want to have firmer commitment that stuff is going to happen, and that the work we do is actually going to materialize into something, because the way they've done things in the last couple of years gives me no confidence in what they're proposing and what they're going to do with, in order to support Bloomington. And I know Bloomington needs more of this, this transit, and Met Transit itself has not been as open a partner as I would like to have.
Anything else, counsel? We've got to keep moving. The night's getting later. Is that enough to work on?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Mr. Verbrugge, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Just the, the last comments from Councilmember Muah just reminded me that Leslie Canderas, the general manager of Metro Transit, and Councilmember John Pacheco will be here at the council meeting at the end of January.
That's good to know. Very good. Our final agenda item tonight, counsel, is item 5.4, our city council policy and issue update. I will start with a review of our listening session. We heard from two speakers. Ms. Ally Ness recapped a, a series of complaints and, and concerns she had over the past 13 years for us. And Bill Becker, we had a nice conversation with Mr. Becker about proposed levies and taxes. He unfortunately couldn't be here for the truth and taxation hearing and wanted to get a chance to talk, so we, we had a good conversation with him. Those were our two speakers. I have just one thing that I want to run past you, counsel, and get your feedback on. So you already, you all know that Jamie has announced his, his resignation, and, and January 7th will be his last day. And we're sad to see him go, but happy for Catholic Charities, because they're getting a good one, so we're happy about that. And as we talked about last time, the city is ultimately going to choose a search firm, and I think that'll happen probably after the first of the year. It's not going to happen now during the holidays, but after the first of the year, a search firm to help us do a complete and comprehensive search, and come up with the best possible candidates for our, to, to be our city manager. As I said, I, you will all be involved. I have no question about that, and we will make sure of that. This will be, this, this is a plum, a plum job for search firms, and then a plum job for a city manager. So we're going to get a lot of candidates and a lot of folks who want to do the search for us, and we're going to get a lot of candidates who want to be our city manager as well. And so that's exciting, and we have that to look forward to as we get into the new year. And we can talk more about that in, in January at our staff retreat. This whole notion of the transition and moving forward, and how we're putting this all together, is going to be an important topic of discussion at our retreat on January 11th. As we search for the new manager, I'm going to propose, counsel, and looking for your feedback, our two assistant city managers, Elizabeth Tolsman and Kathy Hadeen, we're asking them to step into a dual interim leadership role for the city. And a dual leadership role is a unique one, but I think we have a unique opportunity here. Both Elizabeth and Kathy, they're strong, very successful, smart leaders. They've got the respect and the trust of city staff. And I do think that splitting the city manager responsibility between two folks will make it a much more manageable task to keep Bloomington humming right along. And have talked with both of them about the possibilities, and they are working on a, a specific plan of breaking down responsibilities, who, taking on the different reporting responsibilities for the folks who currently report to Jamie. We need one person who's got signature authority, what to do in case of emergencies or crisis communication, all those different things. That's being put together, kind of working through all of that. But I am more than confident in Elizabeth and Kathy, and I think it would be an exciting way to, to continue the continuity on staff, continue to build what we've got going on here, and just kind of keep us moving smoothly through the four or five or so months that it will, it will take to, to get a new city manager on board. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a lot to add, but I do just want to express my support. I think that my perception, and I guess it is reality, that, you know, the city staff has undergone a lot of change over the last seven, eight, 12 months. And so I feel like having leaders in place during the interim that provide the continuity and the stability is really important. And if that's what you are also hearing from staff, then I think it just validates the, the decision. And so, I'm supportive.
Very good. Councilmember Revis?
Lead to that. I, I feel comfortable with that, because I was getting a lot of noise out there in regards to having to bring an interim when we had two very capable assistant managers. So, yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Other thoughts, counsel? Councilmember Lowman?
And I assume, Mayor, that, that you've checked with staff, and the, the senior staff are supportive of this, this particular plan?
I think they are overwhelmingly supportive of this. Like I said, I know they've got, I know that Kathy and Elizabeth have the respect of the senior staff. They've got the trust and the, and the support of them. And I, I think it's, it's a good, good way to move, good, good step forward. And as Councilmember Carter said, in a, after a kind of a tumultuous year, and the potential of moving into a tumultuous year coming up, I mean, with the transition, moving into an election year, who knows what's going to go on, things that we can't control, all that we've been talking about, this is a good opportunity, I think, for continuity and stability at that, in that leadership position.
Well, I want to thank you for your, your research and, and, and really kind of thinking it through. I know there's been a number of ideas that have been, been kicked around there, and I think this recommendation that you're, you're bringing to the council makes a lot of sense. So, I, I can support that if, if, you know, you feel that that is the way forward, to do that. The only, only question I have for you, as we go through the, the dual piece in that transition, is, you know, with the budget, I, I do have some concerns about that, in terms of how that will be handled going into next year.
The budget planning and the budget...
Yeah, budget planning, how that's executed, especially if we're, you know, especially looking to bring a new city manager in on a really complex. So that, that's my one, my one concern with that plan.
And I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think, they're, they're hearing it now, and so that, that helps. But I think also our January 11th retreat is a good opportunity for that, that discussion.
Yeah, I don't want to solve it now, but I do want to raise that.
Understood. So unless I'm hearing any no's or seeing any red flags going up, I think that will be the path that we head down, if that, everybody's cool with that. Very good. Let's do that then. That's all I have. Mr. Verbrugge, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I do have one item, and this is just a, a update regarding our Community Health and Wellness Center. I know the council's really interested in terms of the sustainability components of that project, and what we'll be doing to ensure that it is as energy efficient as possible. So there's a, there's an organization called the Minnesota Climate Innovation Finance Authority, MNCIFA, which is Minnesota's new green bank, which was established by the legislature. So they have put out a final request for information responses this week for, this past week for applicable projects. So what they're trying to do is understand and line up projects with various state and federal funding sources, coordinate with other funders ahead of the shift of administration that's going on right now, so that they can potentially accelerate action. The response, so we, we're submitting. The response doesn't obligate us to anything, but what it essentially does is it gets us into the system for what is essentially a short-term bridge loan, that we would be able to leverage for a significant amount of tax credit, related to the sustainability components of geothermal and solar that we're hoping to include in the project. So, the, MNCIFA is actually a really good option for us, because the tax credits come through the direct pay in the, in the federal IRA through the direct pay in the, in the federal IRA funding, but that sometimes can delay as much as three years from the time that the project is commenced to the time that the, the direct pay comes back. So, that's why this bridge loan program has been set up. So, our staff is working through that. I think this is really an encouraging and optimistic possibility to make sure that we can include as much of a sustainability focus on the, on the building as possible. So, as we go through the process, staff will just be providing updates, so you know where we stand as we move forward.
Thank you. Council, anything to add tonight? I'm hearing nothing, other than a motion to adjourn from someone.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, 7-0. Thank you much, Council. Good discussion tonight, good meeting, good hard work, and you did good work, so take that with you. Well done. Thank you to the staff, thanks to everybody who participated. We had a lot of people involved tonight, so thank you much. Everybody have a great Tuesday.